Thank you. Township of Howell Planning Board Meeting, Thursday, September 2nd, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 8th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 8th, 2021, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 8th, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Members of the public will have a chance to ask questions and comment on applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature, and we will bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in, and you will need to give your name and address. For anyone calling in on the phone, you can raise or lower your hand by dialing *9, and you can do *6 to mute or unmute yourself. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Just make sure that nobody's in the audience, that I have to move in. I think we're good.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Bavai? I have not heard from. Mr. Dorado?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Chief Kudrick?
Here, ma'am.
Mr. Leggio?
Here.
Mr. Nacastro? I have not heard from Mr. Nacastro. Councilwoman Richmond?
Present.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Ms. Casper? Have not heard from her. Mr. Cristiano? Have not heard from him. And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, can everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? And for a moment of silence for all of our first responders, those serving abroad, those serving here, those who did not come home. And let's put in our prayers those that have had to deal with this latest hurricane that's come through and the subsequent tornadoes as well.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have an approval of minutes.
Oh, there's no minutes this evening.
Vouchers.
I have no vouchers this evening.
Correspondence.
I do have correspondence. I have an email from Michael Herbert. He is the attorney for case number SD-2998 Wadsworth Development. He has asked that the board please take jurisdiction of this application tonight so that no further notice is required, and asked that we carry this to the next meeting on September 23rd. And he also granted an extension of time to the board to hear this through October 27th, 2021.
Counsel? Mr. Chairman, if that's okay, I'll just make the announcement. One second. The application of Wadsworth Development LLC, application SD-2998, will be carried to the board September 23rd, 2021 meeting, which will be a virtual meeting beginning at 7:00. The instructions on how to access the virtual meeting are available and will be available on the township's website. All documents in support of the application are on file. All reports from the board's professionals and other agencies are also on file, and all are available online to be inspected. There will be no further notice to property owners, so if you receive the notice of tonight's meeting, you will not receive another. This is your notice that the meeting is being carried to a virtual meeting on September 23rd. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That's all the correspondence I have.
Okay. We're going to resolutions, case number SP-1084, Black Rock Enterprises. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to memorialize.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Too early. Thank you, Nick. The eligible voters are Mr. Dorado, Mr. Husser, Mr. Leggio, and myself.
Motion stands.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse? Motion carries resolutions memorialized.
Okay, next to the resolution is case number SD-2997, Larrabee Realty LLC. Eligible voters are Mr. Dorado, Mr. Husser, Mr. Leggio, and myself. So I have a motion, please.
Motion.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, that was Mr. Dorado. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries resolutions memorialized.
Okay, next case is number SP-10884481, Route 9 LLC. Eligible voters are Mr. Dorado, Mr. Husser, Mr. Seaman, and that's it.
Motion memorialized.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
And Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Motion carries resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next resolution is case number SP-1078, New Horizon Properties LLC. Eligible voters are Mr. Custer and Mr. Seaman. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Trustor?
Second.
Thank you.
Only one left.
Roll call. Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Motion carries resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda is submission waivers. The first submission waiver is case number SP-1091, AATZ Holding LLC.
Who's counting? Mr. Wenning, Michael Wenning. He is the attorney. I just brought him into the meeting.
Is he here? Do you?
Okay, counsel, you want to take yourself off mute?
There he is.
Okay, counsel, the way we normally do the submission waivers, if you have no objection, is our engineer will go through her letter, identify what the waivers are, and if she has any objections to any, and then, of course, you can comment on, you know, any of her specific statements after she's done.
Very good.
Okay. Laura, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we had issued an August 13th, 2021 review letter, the submission waivers are specifically outlined in item 3. Since the issuance of our letter, the applicant's engineer has responded to provide items 10, 11, and 16, thereby leaving items 14, 65, 88, 486, and 87. And because this is for the purposes of deeming the application complete, I would take no exception to those waivers, especially since those three other items have been provided at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wenning, do you have any further comments you'd like to add?
Well, it appears that the engineers had discussed the matter between themselves, and their recommendation is to accept the waivers and go forward.
Okay. Does anybody in the? Anybody on the team here have any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve submission waiver, case number SP-1091, AATZ Holdings LLC.
Thank you, chief. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dorado?
You're on mute, Paul.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're deemed complete. Do you give me a date now, or do I get a date?
You'll get a memo from the board engineer, and then I'll be contacting you for a date.
Okay, and will it be virtual?
Most likely, yes.
Okay. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay. First application before the board is case number SP-1080F711.
We have attorney Benjamin Wine for the applicant this evening. Mr. Wine, can you tell me if you need anyone else brought into the hearing?
Yes, I do. Good evening, everybody. Jake Modesto from Stonefield is our site engineer.
And is that it?
That would be it, yes.
Okay, perfect. I just brought him in. Thank you.
Perfect. All right. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Benjamin Wine of Prime and Twoville, attorney for the applicant 711. The application before you, as you may recall, we received preliminary major site plan approval along with conditional use, as well as bulk variance and design waiver relief back on April 1st, I believe, and it was memorialized in the May 20th resolution prepared by the board attorney. In the interim, we have taken the opportunity and the time to work diligently with the board's professionals and as well as, as well as members of, well, board professionals, and to come back with our final site plan application that's the substance of what's before you this evening. So the, to reorient you, the property is located at Block 142, Lot 1.03, that's 639 US Route 9, and it's in the HD1 zone. It's currently improved with the gas station and convenience store, and we're proposing to replace that with a different convenience store and gas station with six pump, 12-fueling positions. As I indicated, the application has received all other approvals, and the substance of tonight is just for final site plan approval, final major site plan approval, having complied with the conditions since receiving preliminary approval. Specifically, we've worked with the board's professionals to come up with an enhanced and supplemental bumper plan, which you'll see in detail and which has been submitted already for review. We've also restricted the access along Wyckoff Mills Road to right-in, right-out only, where we previously had proposed full access. We've also provided that all truck movements will be limited to the Route 9 access, which again, you'll see in detail. And lastly, some of the other technical, well, all the other technical comments, we've again, worked with the, the board professionals to accommodate those. I also do want to just note that in the interim, we have received environmental commission approval. We did receive a letter of no comment that was submitted to the board dated July 30th, 2020, 21, which, which does satisfy one of the other conditions. We've also since received soil conservation district approval, as well as county approval, and our last outstanding approval, which is currently pending with DOT. So unless you have any questions, I mean, I just have one witness plan to testify this evening, Jake Modesto of Stonefield, and I would just like him to bring up the plans that you all have and, and walk the board through the changes in detail.
Great. Let's get him sworn in first. Is he on camera?
Yes, he is.
Okay, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Yep, it's Jake Modesto. Last name is M-O-D-E-S-T-O-W.
Hey, counsel, can you qualify, Mr. Modesto?
Yeah, absolutely. So Jake, if you don't mind giving the board the benefit of your, your education, your professional background?
Yeah, sure. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is in good standings. I do hold licenses throughout the Northeast Midwest in the field of civil engineering. I graduated from Stevens Institute of Technology with a bachelor's of engineering. I've worked on over 100 land development applications throughout the Northeast Midwest, several being the same scope and nature in the one from the board tonight. And I provided expert witness testimony in both the field of site and traffic engineering.
Great, thank you. We'll accept your credentials.
Before you start, could we let the record show that Mr. Cristiano has joined the meeting?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm very sorry, everybody. Thank you.
Don't worry.
No problem. If you don't mind, I'm just going to share my screen to give the board some visualization of what we've revised. Can everyone see my screen all right? Beautiful. So this is a colorized rendering dated 9/1/2021, labeled rendered site plan exhibit. Simply, this is just showing colorized rendering of what was submitted in the site plan package.
Jake, Jake, I don't want to cut, I'm sorry to cut you off, but if this was not previously submitted, I think we should have counsel mark this as Exhibit A1.
Well, even at that, even at that, Mr. Cachero?
Yes.
I have a legal question for you. If this document was just created yesterday?
Well, that's, I was just about to go into that. The, the rules, the emergency rules that have been adopted in the administrative code by the DCA do not allow for boards to accept any exhibit less than 48 hours in advance. So if this was not submitted more than 48 hours in advance, we can't consider it under those rules. So, you know, you're going to need to take it down and just explain what, what you've done.
Sure. So Jake, in that case, why don't you bring up the, the site plan package?
Yeah, that's not a problem at all. Sorry about that, everyone.
Just for the record, that was, you know, just, if you'd like it on the record, that was just a colorized version of what you're going to see on your screen now, but I fully understand, and we'll proceed with. Mr. Cachero, would you like to mark this as A1? Again, this was previously submitted.
The, the board, the board secretary has pre-marked exhibit.
Okay.
And that is listed as A1.
Okay.
That's your site plan package.
Yeah, this, yep. So we're currently looking at Sheet C3. It's a site plan. There are no more major modifications to what was finally approved during the preliminary site plan. However, what we've done is, is modify the access off Wyckoff Mills. You can see on the right-hand side of the page, we've actually added a pork chop island to create a physical barrier, really forcing the movements of the right-in, right-out. We'll be adding vertical signage to that entrance to further deter and encourage the right-in, right-out movement per the board's professionals' request. We've added additional sidewalk and crosswalks at all entrance points on Wyckoff Mills, Strickland, and Route 9. Working around the property, we have also switched out the lighting fixtures. What before was submitted was a decorative fixture. We are now switching more the commercial-looking fixture, just the evolved LED lights. They will be downlit, generally having the same lighting generation that was previously submitted. In addition, we have, I'd say, gone through extensive conversations as regards to the landscaping as part of this package. I'm going to flip to sheet. Loads here. Sheet C11 of this submitted package, showing this intensive landscaping buffer. We will be making a few modifications to this per the request of the board's professionals. We will be switching out several of the American Hollies with some more green giants, allowing us to have a more robust screening measure at the point of installation, instead of having, letting the American Hollies grow out. So again, it's part of the enhancement of creating a buffer between our, our project loading area and the residence adjacent to us. We also agreed that we will provide three-foot-high plannings that are for all landscaping adjacent to the parking spaces, creating a buffer. So that's something that we will be agreeing to. We did prepare an exhibit showing a WB50 backing into the loading zone, is able to pull in either directly around the site without conflicting with any of the parking spaces or building canopy, either pulling directly in or backing into. Now it'll be submitted under a separate package. We have reviewed, oh, it's, sorry, and then in addition to that, as part of the, the submitted package, we did include revised elevations to the canopy for the removal of two of the signs. I'm just pulling up the submitted signage package, page 7. The board can see that. I don't know.
It's A2 on the exhibit list.
So A2, this is the, the signage plan. This is simply showing the removal of the two 711 canopies and the retention of the, the brand striping across the top. So those are all the major modification we've made to the package. We have reviewed the technical comments provided by CME in the review letter and can agree to comply with all the technical comments.
All right, Jake, just a couple of follow-up questions, just real quick. You might have said this, I cut out for a quick second, but the, there were crosswalks added as well for the board's request?
Yes, correct, on all access points.
Okay. And then additionally, just that additional landscaping, that would be largely evergreen landscaping, that's correct?
Yes, it'll be, yeah, it'll be four seasons.
Okay, and the only other thing I'd like you to do, because you mentioned the lighting, is if you could pull up the lighting plan, which is one of these sheets as well, and just, just orient the board by showing them what the, what the replaced lights are going to look like.
So if the board can see my screen, once again, it's the fixture A, B, C, D, the area lights located at the top of the page. So that was the request from the board to go away from the decorative and go to more of the commercial-looking LED fixtures.
And Mr. Modesto, I've got in my notes here that you were going to provide house side, house side shield, and that the fixtures were going to be dark sky compliant.
They are. They all have house side shields, and our ducts are compliant.
Great, thank you.
All right, Jake, I have nothing further for you on direct, Mr. Chairman. That really sums up the site changes that we've made as, as part of the submission for final site plan.
But just a question on the, on the, the question on lighting that the chairman just asked, the response was that you're doing it. Is that depicted on the plans, or do the plans need to be revised to depict that?
That is depicted on the plans. All, all the pictures shown have house side shielding.
Okay. And also, I just want to get back to the, the testimony with regard to the buffer and the revisions that were made to the buffer. The buffer area remains the same, but the species have been modified to comply with the Township Certified Tree Experts requirements, correct?
Correct, yep. No, there'll be a few more modifications, I think, just again, switching out a few trees with, all in the review letter.
So is it your professional opinion that while the buffer area has remained the same, that the quality of the buffer has improved, and it's much more dense and is a, is better at shielding, you know, light, noise, and, you know, any other activities that are going on on the subject property from the adjacent properties?
It is.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. I believe as part of the preliminary approval, the applicant was going to just review the delivery protocol?
Yeah, that was going to be my question. I have in my notes that, that the applicant agreed to 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. The applicant, actually, there was no, at the end of the hearing, there was no confirmation. They were going to review it and come back to us with some better understanding of what the needs on-site were, what the hours of deliveries were going to be, and they were going to present to us whether they believed that any restrictions were required. The board refrained from imposing any specific conditions, you know, based upon receiving that supplemental information that didn't, it didn't yet have. So that's something we need to resolve tonight. So counsel, I don't know if you want to address that, or the witness wants to address it, but somebody needs to place on the record, you know, where we are with all that.
Absolutely, sure. I'll, I'll address it. So first off, that we, we did discuss that, and we do believe that from a technical perspective, the additional, the, the improvements to the buffering that we've proposed, as well as the restriction that provides that truck access will only be able to enter and exit the site via Route 9, and furthermore, turning the Wyckoff Mills Drive into a, into a right-in, right-out only. We believe that that did accomplish a lot of the concerns, or take, take care of a lot of the concerns that the board had at the previous meeting. So that was, that was one thing that we certainly, we did discuss, but I, I'd like to, I don't know, Mr. Chairman or members of the board, if you had any comments on that.
Anybody? There is no comment, Mr. Wine?
Okay.
Regards to that subject.
Okay. All right, so I guess Ms. Newman, did that answer your question?
I talked about the trucks coming in, but what, like, is there any limit as to timing?
Yeah. Oh, so, so regarding the timing, yes, I'm sorry, that was less than clear. But yeah, we, we are happy to, to confirm that there will be between, a restriction between 12:00 AM and 5:00 AM, there will be no deliveries to the site. That's, that's something we have discussed internally and are happy to accommodate.
But that's kind of our noise ordinance, so that doesn't work for the town. So can you redefine it a little bit? But do you know when they're going to get deliveries? After 7:00? Is it, I mean, are you going with 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
I don't know if we're going to be able to. I'd have to speak to my client about that. If you'd give me a couple of minutes, I can give them a quick call and confirm exactly, but that is the direction that I've been given.
All right, well, in fairness, this is condition 11 of your preliminary approval, that you were going to review delivery protocol with the board's professionals and present a final plan at the time of final site plan approval. So I understand you talked about the truck circulation. You could just narrow it down, but 12:00 AM to 5:00 AM, I mean, that's outside of our noise ordinance, so I don't, I don't recommend that the board allow deliveries outside of those times. I think it needs to be more narrowed in scope.
Okay, in that case, if you don't mind, if I can just take two minutes and just give my client a quick call on that?
Does it make sense, Ms. Newman, to give Mr. Wine what that, the parameters of our noise ordinance are, so when he's discussing with his client, he has the data in front of him?
I mean, it's a state noise ordinance. Are you familiar with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I believe it's 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM in Howell. Might be 5:00, but I can confirm it. But Jen's correct, it's consistent with the state.
Okay, if you give me two minutes, please, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Just to confirm, Mr. Chair, it's 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, I believe.
Thank you.
All right, I am back. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I did double check as well, and I'm not sure, I believe Ms. Newman jumped, jumped in as I speak, as I was on hold, but I think she said it was 7:00 to 10:00 was what the township requirements are. We're comfortable with that for deliveries.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I only had one other item, and then I think Mr. Modesto has adequately addressed the items in my report. There was most of a specific condition that they submitted revised plan to the Environmental Commission for review and comment. I just wanna confirm that that occurred.
Yes, I'll let Jake speak to that directly, but go ahead, Jake.
Yep, no, it occurred, it was submitted.
And did they have comment?
No comments.
I think I indicated at the beginning, Ms. Newman, that we do have a letter from them saying, no, no further comments, dated July 30th.
Thanks, I think I missed that.
Laura, just to jump on one of your questions also. I know at the first hearing, there was a lot of discussion about types of deliveries and the differences in the needs for different types of deliveries. So I just wanna be clear that when you say all deliveries are gonna comply with the hourly restraints that you just mentioned, that's truly all deliveries, and it doesn't exclude any category. I'm sorry?
You were frozen there for a minute.
Okay, am I good now?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure, because we had discussions at the first hearing about different kinds of deliveries. You know, the potato chip deliveries, the soda deliveries, the fuel deliveries, the fresh goods deliveries. So when you were saying no deliveries, that's all deliveries, it's not excluding anything.
Mr. Kachar, I'm really terribly sorry, you just, you just cut out, it might be on my end, but you cut out about halfway through your question, if you don't mind repeating that, please.
I can, I just wanna make sure, you can hear me?
I can hear.
I heard you through the whole thing, so I'm not 100% sure why it's cutting. You have not cut out or froze on me at all.
Okay, maybe I was just standing very still before. So I just wanna make sure, at the first hearing, there were discussions about different types of deliveries and the needs of the applicant for different types of deliveries. So when you're talking about the restrictions we just discussed, saying no deliveries, that includes fuel, potato chips, soda, the, the fresh foods deliveries, everything?
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Kacharo, I had in my notes that there was supposed to be a discussion about a site triangle easement. I honestly don't know what that really means, but it's in my notes. Was that addressed?
So is, maybe I can jump in here, is, I think as regards to the easement dedication, and we'll provide all the descriptions required for that easement, it's located at the Strickland and Wyckoff Mills intersection.
Thank you. Ms. Newman, is that acceptable to you?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything else in their notes they'd like to discuss?
The two major things, Brian, are, was the buffer and the deliveries as far as protecting the 55 and over community, they're right next door, was the major issues, right?
Yep, I'd say so.
So, we're, I'm satisfied with, we don't want, you know, we don't want the town getting a bunch of phone calls. You know, after this gets, gets put into place, that they're not complying, you know, that's why we wanted to handle it this way, right?
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Anybody got any other questions? Okay, Mr. Wine, does that conclude your testimony?
It does. My, if it's all right, and I really do apologize to do this. My, my client asked to give me one quick call. Again, if I could just ask for one minute, but that would be the end of my testimony unless he says something else further.
Fair enough.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. I appreciate everybody bearing with me. The only clarification, and then I'll sum up, that, that my client wanted me to make, is with the deliveries from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, that would be over things that are within their control, things like newspaper drop offs obviously are without of their control. So we just wanted to put that on the record, that, that that may be.
Well, you're gonna have to do much better than that. I don't know, this board doesn't know what's in control and without control. That's why I asked that prior question. So newspaper deliveries, you're saying, what else is outside of 7/11's control?
That's the only thing that I'm aware of, and we'd be happy to put a condition on the record that it would be limited to newspapers pretty well. I mean, again, those are, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
How do newspapers get delivered, though?
I believe that those are delivered by the newspaper provider, and they deliver.
That's not helping me. What I'm telling, what I'm asking is, what kind of vehicle does the newspaper get delivered in?
That I'm honestly not sure, but if that's, if that's, but Ms. Beam, we're happy to, to put on, I mean, if that's something that it can't be larger than a box truck, you know, and if it's going to be larger, then it would be within the hours of 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
But you just said it's outside your control, so how can you commit to those conditions? If the delivery itself is outside your control, now you're saying you can control how it's gonna come? I, I have a hard time believing that's true. So what I'm saying is, is that if you're saying deliveries 7 to 10, delivery should be 7 to 10, period.
Fair enough.
I don't, I don't agree with that. Newspapers have to be delivered earlier than 7 o'clock for the morning commuters. There's, there's a park and ride right there.
I, I, that's up to you guys, honestly.
That makes no sense whatsoever.
But we need to know how it's gonna be delivered, because if the concern is, there's a residential neighborhood, the whole issue with these deliveries is that it's adjacent to a residential neighborhood. And that it's a noise issue prior to 7:00 AM, that's the concern. If the newspapers are being delivered by tractor trailer, and there's backup beeping and this, that, guy, I, this was, this was an issue, respectfully, Chief, this was an issue that came up at preliminary by you all as the board.
I wasn't, I wasn't.
You personally, but this was a condition that was raised by the board in the preliminary approval with respect to noise out of consideration for the adjacent residential neighborhood. That's why this whole thing came about. So if they can tell us how it's gonna be delivered, that's one thing, and the whole concern was noise. That was, that's the whole issue.
All right, so Ms. Beam, I do have confirmation as well that the newspapers are delivered typically in a box truck, nothing bigger.
Okay, great.
Yeah, there's never been newspaper delivery ever in a tractor type trailer in the history of newspaper delivery, I don't think.
I'm sure you've not been qualified as a historian in the medium of daily periodicals. So I, I think, let's just stick to.
A few million pounds worth of product every year, so that, that makes me an expert, yeah.
So Mr. Kacharo, so we, the board doesn't have to put itself online here. Is that satisfactory for the resolution that, that, that the only deliveries outside of those times is for paper delivery in, in a vehicle no bigger than a box truck? That's right. Okay, thank you. And we'll, we'll leave it at that. Mr. Wine, does that conclude your testimony?
Yes, I would just sum up, and by thanking again the board and its professionals for working with us throughout this application. Just a reminder that this is for final major site plan approval, and I appreciate everybody's time this evening, and we respectfully request that you grant the application as presented with the stipulations put on the record, as will be fleshed out, I believe, in Mr. Kacharo's resolution. So thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, we still need to open it to the public as well.
Correct, correct. So Eileen, if you could please open it to the public. Let me know when you are ready to open it to the public, and I'll start the timer. We'll wait about a minute, minute and a half.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public for questions or comments on the application for 7/11. If anyone has any questions or comments, please use the raise your hand feature. You'll be brought into the meeting one at a time. You will need audio and video, and give your name and address.
And if they're on a telephone?
Yes, if you're on the phone, you can use star nine for raising and lowering your hand, and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start the timer. It's about 7:42 now.
I don't have anyone with their hands raised.
All right, it's almost about a minute. Hey, Eileen, do you still have anybody raising their hand on this application?
No one with their hand raised.
Okay, then we will close the public portion. Does anybody from the board have anything else they'd like to discuss? Or have questions they'd like to ask? Seeing none. Mr. Wine, do you have any other further comments?
Nothing further. I summed up before, but thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve final major site plan, case number SP-1080F711, Inc.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Dorado.
Roll call.
Yes, please.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Leggio?
Yes.
Councilwoman Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Mr. Cristiano?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great evening.
Have a good day. Okay, next case up is case number SP-1085AAFFHW Property LLC. Mr. Kacharo, I, I have a question in regards to whether the application has been deemed complete. And I'm assuming we'll wait until the council comes up.
Mr. Pape is the attorney for this application, and he is in the meeting.
Thank you. So let's, let's let Mr. Pape enter his appearance. I'm sure Mr. Pape is gonna have a question about jurisdiction, and then at that point, you know, we can, we can resolve your question, Mr. Chair.
Hey, Ron, before we go forward, I have to recuse myself on this application. So I don't need to just bow out now.
Well, you can, you certainly have the right to watch it as a member of the public if you wish to. But yes, this is the time to recuse yourself, and I just ask that the minutes reflect that Mr. Husser recused himself prior to the beginning of the hearing.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Nick.
Good night, Nick.
All right, and, and Eileen, I didn't do a count, we still have at least five?
We have seven, we're good.
Okay, all right. So then, Mr. Pape, if you wanna enter your appearance, we can get started.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, Board professionals and public. My name is Kenneth Pape. I'm an attorney with Hyalburn Pape. This evening, I have the privilege and the responsibility of representing AAFFHW Property LLC, your applicant. This is an application for preliminary and final site plan approval to construct two industrial buildings. The two buildings are proposed to be constructed within the zone that permits those uses. We would respectfully ask that the board confirm receipt of our notices and confirm that they were adequate for the board to take jurisdiction this evening.
The notices were received, Mr. Pape. Just with regard to jurisdiction, if you could just address the chairman's question, and then we can resolve part two of your request.
Surely.
Mr. Pape?
Yes.
I noticed in my packet that the Environmental Commission has, has requested a review of the site plan and has not, had not been given that opportunity to do so. So I question whether this application is complete at this particular.
Then just, just, Mr. Chairman, I, I just feel I need to give a definition of what completeness is versus what information we'd like to see. Completeness is very specific as to items that are identified on the checklist. So just, Laura, is submission to the Environmental Commission on the checklist?
No.
All right, so that's not a completeness issue, but it is an issue that is legitimate in terms of information. But, Mr. Chairman, I do remember seeing that there were, I think there were multiple comments.
There's three reports from the Environmental Commission, and every submission that comes in goes out to them, whether it's paper or not, they do get all the same links that all the board professionals get. And I do have three reports from them.
Yeah, so it's, go ahead.
The last one I have here is B14 dated 6/9/21, and it just indicates that the Environmental Commission requested the applicant meet with the commission.
Well, that's not, that's the last one. There were two prior to that that had substantive comments, but it's not on the checklist, so it's not a completeness item. They were granted submission waivers, some submission waivers, so I think the application is complete, and that the board has jurisdiction. And I think Mr. Pape is gonna provide some very specific testimony tonight regarding what was provided to the Environmental Commission responding to comments that the Environmental Commission report raised and discussions about. I believe, Mr. Pape, your client did actually appear before the Environmental Commission, correct?
Yes, counselor and Mr. Chairman, board members, we did appear this summer. Dr. Raymond Walker and I did appear before the Environmental Commission and made a presentation to them.
Yeah.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think that you and the board members know the importance that we place on going to your Environmental Commission, and that I don't think I've ever come before this board without going to the Environmental Commission at least one time to make a presentation. And in this instance, we were, we were there this summer, and Dr. Walker, our environmental scientist, made a pretty comprehensive presentation. I've asked that he join us this evening to make a similar presentation to you. But if I may, our goal is to present the application to the board members. Although, over the past year, we've had the opportunity to present the application to your commissions and to some of the township professionals, and as always, the fire chief, we have not yet had the opportunity to present to you. We anticipate that there, that there'll be concerns brought to our attention that are your concerns. And we'd like to go on the record at the beginning of the hearing stating that we anticipate that this is not a hearing that is concluded in one evening. In fact, we anticipate that this is a hearing that we're going to be carefully listening to you and recording your concerns, and that we'll need time to incorporate those concerns into the plan. If there is a request that we go back to the Environmental Commission, we certainly will do so. But I, perhaps at the end of the evening, you can give us that direction if you, if you feel it's appropriate. But I would like to make it very clear, very clear to everyone who's listening, that our goal is to work with the board to create an application that is worthy of an approval. We followed the ordinance, we've worked with your professionals, and we've worked with the township commissions, but we're looking forward to beginning our presentation to you and hearing your concerns. So, and also, Mr. Chair, to avoid that awkward moment that happened at a recent hearing, can we pick a time that we're going to? Can we pick a time that we're going to and whatever it is, just so that there's clarity?
Mr. Chair, I would actually not recommend that. I would recommend that we just go and not make any promises or representations one way or the other. And, you know, allow some flexibility in how the the hearing goes.
That's correct. So, the our normal time is ten is ten PM and at that point, we will we will reevaluate.
Understood.
All right. So, I just want to be very clear then for everybody. That was not a hard stop time at ten o'clock PM. Anyone who heard that, you know, you misheard. What the chairman said is we're going to reevaluate at ten PM if necessary. I mean, we may conclude the hearing before that. I also want to be very clear that anyone who decides to leave the hearing early does so at their own risk of missing something. The hearing could end before ten. We could decide to go past ten. If you decide to leave the hearing, it's your own decision and is not based on any representations that the board has made to you. So, go ahead, Mr. Pape.
Sure. I think that clarity is excellent. May we begin the substantive presentation, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The application that we'll present to you will be through professional witnesses. Patrick Lyman, who is a professional engineer with Collier. Collier was previously Maser and he's responsible for the plans that were prepared. With, we also have Dr. Raymond Walker, the environmental scientist who presented the environmental concerns to the Environmental Commission. And he's going to be most helpful in talking about existing environmental conditions and investigations that were conducted by the applicant. Sean Nager is our architect responsible for the design of the building. And the traffic consultant who will be testifying this evening is Dan DiSario. I intended to begin with Patrick Lyman's testimony and then to go to Dr. Walker. That time, I think the third witness may be Sean Nager, but we'll decide together. With Mr. Lyman, if a counselor, if Mr. Lyman could be sworn in, we'll place his credentials on the record.
Hey, I just want to make sure. Mr. Lyman, you're on camera?
Yes.
I see you. Okay. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Patrick Lyman, P A T R C K, Lyman, L Y N A M.
Hey, and counsel, if you can please qualify the witness.
Surely. Mr. Lyman, would you take a few moments to share with the board your education and professional background?
Yes, so I have a bachelor's in science and civil engineering from NGIT. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey for the past fifteen years. And I've been accepted as a expert witness in civil engineering before this board before.
And may I ask that you confirm that your license is in good standing this evening?
Yes, it is in good standing.
Mr. Chair, would you accept Mr. Lyman and allow him to testify as an engineer this evening?
Yes, Mr. Pape.
Mr. Lyman, I would ask if you could begin by introducing the exhibits that you'll rely upon for your presentation. And with permission, all exhibits that are presented, counsel and board members are limited to those that were previously filed.
Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so the first exhibit is a high altitude aerial exhibit. The next exhibit is a close up view of the property, another aerial exhibit. And then the third exhibit is a colored site plan rendering of the project.
Perhaps let's begin with the high altitude aerial, sir.
Okay.
Just a note for the board before you go any further. These exhibits are dated today, but I did receive them on Tuesday. So, we have had them in plenty of time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If you would, Mr. Lyman, with this aerial photograph, if you could help the board locate the property and then describe existing conditions on the property.
Okay, so the subject site is block one sixty four, lot five point oh one. And it contains twenty nine point five four acres of property. The address is twenty nine Howell Road. It's located with frontage along Howell Road to the east. Oakerson Road and Michael Curtin Lane to the north. And bypass thirty three to the south. Subject site is located between business thirty three and bypass thirty three. And is southwest of the intersection of Howell Road and Five Points Road at business thirty three. The subject site is located adjacent to the bypass thirty three ramp to the south. And intersection interchange with Hall Mills Road via Oakerson Road to the west.
Could you describe the existing conditions, what activities take place, what structures are on the property?
Sure. The site is currently contains a farmland with two metal structures on it. And it's used for farming activities currently.
Thank you. And just one more time, the zone designation for the property?
Yes, the property is located within the Special Economic Development Zone District.
And the proposed building, if you could confirm that the proposed the proposed uses of the proposed building are consistent with those with that ordinance?
Yes, the proposed warehousing and distribution use and potentially assembly and or light manufacturing use are both permitted in the SED zone.
Thank you. I think that we, if you take us around the property to give us a sense of what the surrounding uses are. Could we go to the low altitude aerial photograph, please? With this visible, I think we can see the activities on the site a little bit clearer. But I'm going to ask if you could describe the existing topography, the existing grading and sloping of the property.
Okay, so the the subject sites currently contain on a farmland with two metal structures, as mentioned before, contains access to Howell Road and Oakerson Road currently. The top, you know, topography and the subject site are surface drains. It slopes in three different directions currently for the farm field. A portion of the site near Howell Road drains to the southwest towards Howell Road into an existing stormwater system in Howell Road. The southernmost portion of the site drains to the southwest portion to the site boundary with the adjacent farm and bypass thirty three. Majority of the property drains towards the center of the west property line and drains onto the adjacent farmland. There is no current currently no formal drainage systems on the property now.
Thank you. I think that would be appropriate for you to take us now to your rendered site plan.
Okay.
Is there any way for you to like blow that up a little bit?
Is that better?
A little bit. It still seems
It's still small?
Yeah.
Okay, let me try to
Maybe maximize your screen like in the like up, yeah.
It is maximized. I apologize for that. I'm sure there's a way here. Maybe I can get it larger.
I'm good. I have it with me, but I'm just saying for the benefit of the people at home, it's hard to see because it's kind of small.
Right. Okay, I'll see if I can get it larger. Move things around here. One second.
What's better?
Okay, excellent.
Mr. Lyman, we're going to take some time to go through specific elements of the site plan. But if you could give all of us an executive overview of the proposed development plan before the board this evening.
Sure. So, the proposed project includes two buildings to house the permitted uses totaling approximately four hundred and twenty five thousand square feet. Building A is three hundred and twenty five thousand square feet approximately and located on the western portion of the site. Building B is approximately a hundred thousand square feet and located on the eastern portion of the site. Parking is provided on the east side of building A and the west side of building B, which are the fronts of the buildings. A loading is located on the west side of building A and the east side of building B, which is on the rear of the buildings. A farmland buffer is proposed along the westland, western property line and a residential buffer is provided on the eastern property line. There are decentralized green infrastructure, best management practices for stormwater throughout the the site, which we described later. There is a fire water tank proposed south of building B, which is to service the the water service for potable and fire via wells on site. And there is a low pressure pump station provided adjacent to the fire water tank to provide sewer service for the project.
Think that with, I'd like to go through the specific elements of a site plan. Let's begin with grading. So, if you could identify to the board, what was
Mr. Pape?
Yes.
Before we do that, and before you get too far into, you know, the the site plan design, just one thing I think is probably good to get on the record at the beginning of the hearing. We keep talking about permitted uses. I'd like to be just a little bit more specific about what the permitted uses are that are being proposed. And also, to the extent that that is a warehouse, if you could provide some testimony as to the kind of warehouse, whether we're talking about a fulfillment center or a distribution center, a warehouse that serves uses that are on site. You know, more particularly what we're talking about as to the use before we get into the design.
Sure. Patrick, do you, I can make some statements. Patrick, do you have anything that you wanted to add before I do?
Well, the buildings are not large enough to be fulfillment centers, so they are intended to be warehouses with offices. And we're also, which is the permitted use, also, we're, you know, considering light manufacturing uses as well. So, not not a fulfillment center.
So, and under the category of light manufacturing and staying within the four corners of the ordinance would be assembly, light manufacturing, warehousing and 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 distribution of product, but it is not the fulfillment center, the Amazon fulfillment center, as Mr. Lyman indicated. Wrong size building, actually wrong size building, wrong number of loading docks, wrong number of parking stalls, not not the request.
And also, just to follow up on the representations that were just made, are the warehouses? Are they linked to the office use? Are they accessory to the office and they're holding product that are associated with the offices?
The offices are are not independent of the warehouse. There are, it is envisioned that the maximum number of tenants in each building, the maximum number of buildings in each building would be four. The goal would be to have one, but there's adequate office space shown in the building. So, there could be multiple tenants, but the offices would be associated with the the industrial activity that's going in the building. They're not independent offices that not rented out as
All right. So, then, just to be clear, the warehouse, you're not taking in products from offsite that has nothing to do with the offices. You know, in order to soar and distribute everything in the warehouses is related to whatever businesses are going to be occupied in the offices.
Very clearly stated, and yes, that's accurate.
Okay. Okay, that's that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, on that issue.
Thank you.
You know, Patrick, I'm going to go out of order and just one step. Before we go into the grading and the drainage and the elements, I'm going to ask if you could speak to the concern brought to our attention by the Environmental Commission, that there is a cemetery in the vicinity of our client's property. If you could speak to that at this at this juncture, please.
Sure. So, the the project, the subject site is actually adjacent to the Jerseyville Cemetery, which is located to the northwest of the property. And with regards to the to the cemetery, the applicant has proactively performed a ground penetrating radar study around the border, fifty foot around the border of the cemetery to identify any anomalies that may be underground. And we identified some anomalies anomalies along the property lines. And so, we had designed the the plan to avoid those anomalies and provide sufficient buffering from the Jerseyville Cemetery on both sides in order to avoid disturbing those anomalies.
So, if I, the there is a cemetery, it's not on our client's property?
No, no.
Well, then, what would the anomalies be attributed to? I understand the cemetery, you're saying the cemetery is on lot six, I guess?
Yeah, I'm going to zoom into the cemetery location. So, yes, lot six. And there's cemetery. So, we performed a GPR study. We looked at the for consistency, we looked at the soil and we looked at also we GPR'd some of the the grave sites. So, we can identify anything that is that looks like buried remains there. So, we found some anomalies along both property lines, which we mapped out using GPS. And we identified those locations and we adjusted the plan to pull our grading and landscaping away from those anomalies.
And if you could, on the
I guess my question, though, was what what does does an anomaly indicate that there's a grave there? Or is it just, it's an anomaly because it yielded different results than everywhere else on the property?
Right. It's it's anomaly because we don't know what it is. I mean, we we looked at the grave sites on the cemetery site to try to get a representation of what a grave could be. And then we use that those results to check against the results we found along both property lines. And some of them appear to be you know, related to the the grave anomalies. But we haven't done any excavation or so forth, other sub subsurface investigations on those anomalies. We're just simply avoiding those areas in the project.
Was there a supplemental investigation of any documents? I mean, does does the deed for the property identify any cemetery use on site?
I I don't know. I didn't review the title.
All right. And my understanding also is that the county has some records. And there, the county does, and Jen may have the the terminology better than I do. The county is the entity which has identified at least lot six as containing a cemetery of some individual historic significance. I mean, is that correct, Jen?
Yes, I spoke to the planning director at Monmouth County and he indicated that, I know you're referring to a different name associated with the cemetery, but the records the county has has it listed as the Oakerson Family Cemetery and that it's still owned by the family. Um, but they don't really have any records beyond that, but just that it is on lot six, it's not on the subject property. They also had some kind of survey that the site itself was some kind of, it was on their individual historic survey. And what was expressed to me was that was based specifically on the fact that there was at some point a historic farmhouse on this property, but that had been demolished several years ago. And that there are no regulatory restrictions associated with the with inclusion on that survey. So, that's kind of what the county had relayed to me today.
Mr. Kucha, I do have a couple more questions of so, Mr. Lyman, I, the the testing was done by our client. The results identified anomalies near the common property line with with six. Would you confirm that the resulting, the changes to the plan now will have no excavation in the areas where those anomalies were shown? That those areas will remain unexcavated? That those areas will remain unexcavated. And if, if requested, we can actually put a, a deed restriction over them so that no excavation does occur.
That is correct. There would be no excavation, uh, and we pulled all the plantings. So there are no root balls, uh, in those areas as well. There'll be just, uh, surface, uh, ground cover. Uh, along those, there's basically turf grass.
So.
Mulch.
An unusual condition, but one that when identified, uh, in the field was, was thoroughly investigated. And your applicant took affirmative steps to make certain that there was not any desecration of the graveyard area. With permission, I'll, let's go into the grading of the site. If you could describe the overall grading of the site.
Sure. So let me start on, uh, the eastern portion of the property. So the, um. There's a residential buffer along the eastern property. Uh, we're proposing a six foot high berm. Uh, within the, the buffer area. Um, so it does go up six feet minimum. Uh, and then we're proposing, uh, a wall to maintain that six feet. Uh, and then after the wall, uh, it drops down to, um. To bio retention. Stormwater basins, um, which, uh, drain the loading dock from building B. Uh, and the loading area for building B is actually four feet lower than the finished floor of the building. Uh, so then the grade comes up to the building, uh, and then the parking lot on the west side of building B. Uh, actually, and building A, they both drain away from the buildings. Uh, and they drain into, uh, three infiltration basins. Uh, in between the main, main drive aisle and the parking lots. Uh, and then, uh, on building A, uh, again, on the same. Uh, design as building B, uh, the finished floor is four feet higher than the rear loading zones. Uh, and those, uh, rear loading zones drain, uh, towards, uh, the west into, uh, multiple bio retention basins. Um. Which are outside the farmland buffer, uh, and eventually the grading stops at the farmland buffer. Uh, and that is consistent with the topography of the existing site. So it, it, the existing site drains from the northeast to the southwest. Uh, and that's how we maintained, uh, that grading pattern, uh, and also the drainage patterns that go along with it.
Mr. Lyman, in your opening remarks, you used terminology, very interesting. You, you use the terminology decentralized green infrastructure best management practices. And just now you took us through some of the stormwater, um, elements. Are those elements that you just described? Are they, um, elements of the decentralized green infrastructure best management practices?
Uh, yes, they are. Uh, the, the entire project is, um, designed. In accordance with the township requirements for stormwater management, as well as the recently adopted New Jersey, uh, D E P stormwater rules.
So kind of stole my thunder there, but I like that. So there are three, I think, three very important things that the board members must hear from you as the design engineer. And one is you are aware of and did follow the township's stormwater drainage requirements.
Yes.
You are aware of and did follow the two thousand twenty-one New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection stormwater requirements.
Yes.
And the third is that the entire stormwater system on this property creates no burden on the township of Howell. It's a privately owned system for which you have designed an operations manual and submitted that manual. To a number of governmental agencies for review and approval.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Um. Could you, I guess, for a moment, just, what's the ultimate discharge location for the stormwater? Can you confirm that the reception, where the stormwater is being directed? Um, can, is, it can handle the, the rate that is going to be discharged?
Okay, so, uh, as I mentioned, under existing conditions, uh, there are three discharge points that, that site currently discharges to. Uh, so there is a south, um, west or southeast portion of the, of the project that surface drains to the Howell Road drainage system. So we have an outlet from our, uh, wet pond, uh, best management practice discharging out to that location. Uh, we also have, uh, a discharge location at the southwest corner of the, of the property outside the farmland buffer. Uh, in which, uh, you know, that, that's current portion of the site currently drains to now. Uh, we also have a discharge point, uh, right roughly in the middle of the western property line, common with the Oakerson, uh, farm. Uh, on the west side, which again, that discharges, uh, at the same location where the farm discharges. Uh, as well. So all discharge points, um, will meet the, uh, required reductions. Um. For, for those discharge points.
Thank you. So I know there are comments from the board's professionals with regard to the stormwater system. Considerably less comment, comments than there were when we began many months ago. But I'm going to ask that you confirm that you can and you will work with the township's professionals to address those technical comments.
Yes, we will.
Circulation before this presentation to the board is complete, we'll have traffic testimony. But as the author of the plan that's before the board, I'm going to ask if you could. Share with us the, the onsite circulation, the points of ingress and egress. And the, um, circulation patterns that you've designed as part of the site plan.
Sure. So the, uh, so we have met with the fire chief, uh, Robert Lewis to review the site and circulation. And we have incorporated, uh, his comments into the plans. Um. Circulation is provided, uh, by both buildings for tractor trailers, garbage trucks, as well as township emergency vehicles. Uh, there's one bifurcated driveway along Howell Road that allows, uh, all turn move, turn movements into. The site, but only right turns out of the site and a dedicated left turn lane is provided on Howell Road to come into that driveway. Uh, there is another, uh, full movement driveway provided along Oakerson Road. Uh, at the north, uh, west portion of the property. Uh, and trucks are directed through the site via signs in order to the Oakerson, uh, road driveway. As there's a, a weight restriction along Howell Road. Um, the, uh. Turning radius exhibits have been provided, uh, and they're consistent with the vehicles anticipated. Yes.
That was actually one of my questions. I just want to dumb that down to me for layman terms.
Yeah.
So there will be no tractor trailer traffic to Howell Road. Is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, so, um, that was actually the end of, um, my circulation description. Uh, um. And, you know, we can further describe with the traffic engineer if necessary.
I think as a design engineer, it's important for the board to know that. You've also inc- incorporated into your plan, all of the necessary site triangle easements to. Can, make certain that those intersections remain safe in the future.
That is correct.
Okay. And. Um. We also, and, and I know that you said it, but I think some emphasis. The radii that are associated with the driveway system are specifically designed to. Match the anticipated vehicles. So th- this was not, uh, an off the shelf design. If you could just speak to that a little bit further.
Yes, we, uh, we. We designed the, uh, the circulation based on a W sixty-seven tractor trailer truck. Um, and, and that was the largest vehicle to circulate. Um, within the major drive aisles and the loading areas of the, of the project. Um, and then we also, uh, confirmed the radii with the township's fire, uh, truck as well for emergency vehicles. Um, we also looked at the, uh, garbage truck road refuge, uh, for the, uh, the compactor locations. Uh, so we did, uh, confirm, uh, all those, um, vehicles can navigate through, through the site.
And your plan set includes those turning templates. They're all part of what was submitted.
That is correct.
Thank you. Let's, if we could go to the, the parking fields that are shown on the property, just go through their location and. And adequacy, knowing that there's opportunity for Mr. DiSario to talk about them in detail later.
Okay, so, um. Parking is provided for both buildings, meeting the township ordinance. Building A contains a hundred and fifty-five spaces where a hundred and twenty-nine are required. Building B contains eighty-seven spaces where forty-eight, uh, are required. And for the total site, there are two hundred and forty-two spaces where a hundred and seventy-seven are required. Uh, the parking is distributed along the front of each building. Um, and the parking spaces are nine by nineteen with twenty-five foot drive aisles, which, um, are per the township ordinance. Uh, loading is provided, um, on the rear of the buildings, uh, which building A contains fifty-five spaces where twelve are required. Building B, uh, provides twenty-eight spaces where four are required. So there are eighty-three loading spaces. Uh, zones or bays where sixteen are required. The loading spaces are sized at sixty feet by thirteen and a half feet with greater than fifteen feet of clearance, and that is in accordance with the township ordinance.
Mr. Lyman, if I could just stop you there, is there a specific reason why you have so many additional parking and loading spaces? More specifically parking, but, um. I mean, a hundred and seventy-seven are required and you have two hundred and forty-two. So I think we're going to need just operationally why we need to have so many additional.
Right. I'm going to defer that to the traffic testimony. To, towards the end, but yes, that is duly noted.
And, 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 and I can, that, when the lawyer does it, it's, it's just by way of introduction. Um. Nothing worse than having a building that has inadequate parking and the parking can't be contained on site. Knowing that there could be shift changes on the site and we anticipate that there would be shift changes on site. We're fully aware of the issues that have occurred in other buildings of, um, similar use. When there's shift changes, we built into the site additional parking. But Mr. DiSario will take through the details of that a little bit. Mister. So. Um. I think that the landscaping elements of the plan are important, and I think that we should go through the different elements of the landscaping plan. Uh, you, you've identified that there are farm buffers and there are residential buffers. And we also have landscaping on-site obligations. Um, let's do the, the heavy and important ones first. The nature of the landscaping that would be in the farm buffer. And then we'll do the nature of the landscaping in the residential buffer, then we'll go on site.
Okay, so the, the project as a whole, um. Contains, you know, a mix of evergreen, it's deciduous trees and shrubs, while it's grasses and perennials. Um, the, the buffer along the farmland, uh, is, is along the western proper line as mentioned before. And, and again, it only contains landscaping, doesn't contain any grading or other, uh, proposed elements. Uh, the residential buffer, uh, again, provides the six foot high berm. Uh, with a, with a retaining wall to maintain that six foot high berm, uh, as well as, uh, heavy, um. Mix of, of landscaping for screening, uh, as well, you know, it's the same, uh, intent is to screen. Uh, the project along the residential buffer as well as, uh, the farmland buffer. So. Uh, street trees, uh, just continue this. The street trees are provided along Howell Road and Oakerson Road in accordance with the township ordinance. Parking lot trees, uh, are also provided to meet the township ordinance. Uh, additional trees throughout the site are, are proposed to, to meet the requirements for replacement trees and then previous surface. Sorry, um, and then, uh, plantings are provided to screen the, uh, the trash compacters on both ends. Uh, of each building. Um. However, due to the compactor locations within the loading zones, uh, the, the landscaping is not directly adjacent to those compacters. Uh, we did receive comments from the board's landscape architect and incorporate those, and we, uh, we received recent comments which we intend to. Uh, uh, agree to, uh, and overall intent on landscape plan is, is to have a fully compliant, uh, landscape, uh, plan.
And I appreciate your making that comment. Um, board members, chair board members, um, recent comments from your professionals. Did identi- did identify the benefits of further landscaping around the compactors. And we look forward to working, meeting with them and coming up with an appropriate plan.
This is Pape?
Yes.
Could, could you please clarify if the buffers are four season buffers?
Surely. Patrick, if you could, take us through the, the plant materials.
Yeah, so, uh, again, it's a mix of evergreen and deciduous. The evergreen is obviously four season. And we concentrated the evergreens, uh, you know, to provide a four season buffer. Uh, on, on both the farmland buffer and the residential buffer.
Thank you.
The plans that are before you do reflect comments that were received from Ms. Bureau. But to the extent that there are further comments, we'll, we'll, uh, address them, but we, we did confer with Ms. Bureau. With permission, let's, let's do the, the lighting, Patrick. Um, if you could describe the lighting.
Okay, so the pole mounted lights are at twenty-four feet in height. Uh, the building. Lights vary from eighteen feet to twenty-four feet in height. Uh, there are all downward, uh, light, uh, fixtures and they are all LED fixtures. Um, the. Uh, the luminaires are to be photocell controlled and operated from dusk to dawn. Uh, the lighting design is intended to be fully conforming with the lighting ordinance. Providing a minimum of point three foot candles and a maximum average of zero. Point five foot candles. Um, we did receive a comment from the board engineer and, uh, regarding the in- intensity. Of the lighting in the pavement areas. Um, and if the board's inclined to grant the waiver, we are, we are willing to work with the board engineer, uh, to raise those levels. Um, and, and we'll try to keep it to the average of point five, uh, but likely it may increase the, the average slightly.
But if, so you, you've designed it to be ordinance compliant. Staff, the professional staff has identified some areas where further intensification is their recommendation. And that's your testimony that you could do that, but it might trigger, um, a waiver on, um, the part of the applicant.
That's correct. That is correct.
All right.
So, could we get our professionals to opine on that, please?
We would welcome that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to defer to Sherry, but the comment is specific that they're not maintaining the minimum. A point five foot candles throughout the pavement surface. That's an I E S standard.
Yeah, I see some point threes. See some point, a lot of point threes. Is that what you're, you're commenting on?
That is correct.
Yeah.
With, Mr. Chair, we'd like to dial them up. Um, but then you also have that, the overall average requirement, and when you dial up those central areas. Um, we, we may exceed the average by a couple of tenths. That, that's the, the goal was to make certain that we did not need to request relief, but to be. To be open to these, this guidance.
For, for my opinion, and Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think. That, uh, with a heavy truck area, we should really opine and, and refer to the I E S standards. For a site like this.
Yeah, I would agree with you, and it's, it's just not possible to meet the ordinance and get the point five minimum.
And they may need to increase the quantity of fixtures as well. To, to try to keep the overall intensity down, but allow more light to, to, to meet those I E S requirements.
Right. They just can't get the point five average and get a point five minimum, so they, you can't meet the standard of the ordinance.
Mr. Pape, you get no fight for me.
Well, we, 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 our goal is to have a well-designed. Plan including a well-designed and safe lighting system. We'll, we'll spend the, the next couple of weeks with your staff and come up with, with a response.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. If, a little more on the lighting, if you could describe the height of the fixtures, confirm the steps that are taken to assure no spillage. Uh, onto, uh, any of our neighboring properties.
Yeah, so the, uh, again, the pole mounted, uh, lights are twenty-four feet in height and the building mounted lights vary from eighteen feet and. To twenty-four feet in height, and, uh, they are positioned to be internal to the site. Uh, and then, and they are directed to be internal, not to provide spillage onto, uh, off the site.
And, uh, L E D bulbs?
Yes, sir.
Perhaps this would be a good point to just take a, a little step and talk about. All of the, the green elements, not the building. We'll wait for Sean to talk about the green elements of his building. But would you talk about the green elements of your site design?
Yeah, so the, for, uh, lead, I, I believe the, the ordinance, uh, wants, uh, applicants to incorporate lead. Um, designs into their projects. Um. We, as far as that's concerned, I mean, we have the the LED fixtures where they're they're low-energy fixtures. That's a lead compliant item. We are proposing to to catch the roof runoff and and recharge the roof runoff, which is another lead item, the entire stormwater management and decentralized green infrastructure is is designed in accordance with D P requirements, however, that also complies with national lead item as well. So there are in the site, there are incorporated elements for for green infrastructure.
Are there any additional items such as bike racks and and such the like, EV charging stations?
There are no bike racks or EV charger charging stations. I know the architect can expand on how the buildings further provide LED, I mean, a lead in in credits as well. But we are not proposing any bike racks or charging stations at this time.
The, if those were concerns of the board members, we would certainly explore both of those.
I'm not sure about the bike racks. Chief, do we really want to encourage anybody riding on the road to lead to this site on a bicycle?
I mean, personally, I wouldn't, just because of everyone distracted driving. But I mean, we all know from driving around town, our our town is very popular for for bicyclists, especially Howell Road. That's a that's a main thoroughfare there. There's a lot of bicyclists on it, so there's probably no. It's a lot better in this area than it is on the regular stretch of Howell Road from from five-twenty-four, you know, say, all the way up to the overpass here. That section of road is definitely better, but that's.
You 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 said it, it's not, we we probably shouldn't be encouraging it.
Okay.
Fair with that, I'm fine with that answer.
Okay.
Mister Pape, if you want my opinion, then yeah, I would say that, you know, electric charging, car charging seems to be. It seems to be here, doesn't seem to be going away. I I I don't, I've, I don't care either way.
Yeah.
Maybe maybe in your client's best interest to incorporate some of those elements.
Chairman, I just ordered my first electric car. I want I want him to put some charging stations here.
There you go.
Okay. We'll we'll explore it and be prepared to to have affirmative statements when we return. Would you, Patrick, would you, utilities, you 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 talked in your opening statements, you talked about the water supply, the the wells and the tanks. A little more detail, if you would, on water supply for firefighting and and potable purposes and how it will behave.
Okay, so as I mentioned before, we are proposing two domestic wells for each building and one fire well for the for the fire tank. And the the fire tank will be filled via the the well, the the one well. And then that that would be sent out to each building to handle fire suppression for pressure and flow into those buildings. So on a discussion of fire, we did accommodate Chief Lewis's recommendations and provided five fire hydrants throughout the the site to to accommodate firefighting activities.
In in the locations directed by the chief?
Yes, sir.
And there were also requests that there be FDCs on the buildings in specific locations and have those been included in the design?
Yes.
Could you please clarify what an FDC is? Understand that acronym.
So it's so it's simply a fire department connection and it's basically for the fire engines when they come in to pump, provide more pressure or even flow into the buildings if they need it using the the fire truck.
And and so you're 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 supercharging the the suppression system with the with the fireman's equipment?
That is correct.
The fire chief was very specific where he wanted them, so they would be where his fire trucks could set up and not be in conflict with his firefighters fighting. Patrick, if if you would confirm where you were directed is where they are.
That is correct.
Okay.
What is the height of the tank?
Uh, the tank, we we don't have a design for the tank yet. So I I don't have a height of the tank right now. So and that would, you know, we we would, you know, we have to get the the building's design as fire sprinkler contractor involved, MEP. We'd have to do a full design of the buildings in order to determine the volume of the tank needed.
Ms. Newman or Ms. Beam, do you, do you have any concerns about what that tank may look like and how it may be visible from Howell Road? No. Trying to be very careful on on what I say and I don't say because I'm not on that side of the fence.
What I can tell you is we have nothing in our ordinance that would require a screen. Perhaps what would be helpful is if the applicant's engineer could give us a cross-section so that maybe we could see there is a buffer or at least some level of screening within that area. So maybe we can see what the cross-section would be from Howell Road to the tank, just to see whether or not it's going to be very apparent that there's a tanker there or if in fact it is screened appropriately.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a number of things that can be done with the tanks that would, as you're aware, we're presenting warehouse applications elsewhere in the state. And and the design of the tanks, there are there are a number of things to do to minimize their appearance. We'll we'll come back to you with a maximum height and some treatments of the tank.
Thank you, because they could get pretty large. That's what my biggest concern is.
Yeah.
But they can go flatter and fatter.
That's correct, yeah.
They don't have to go high.
Right. I'm a, I've become personally a specialist in being fatter and shorter. So, um, let's talk a little bit about sanitary sewer, Patrick, if you could. I think the 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 board is most likely aware that a commitment was made by an applicant on on Fairfield Road to construct a regional sanitary sewer system that was designed to provide sewer service to this entire region. And that and that, if that is moving forward, if you could describe how this system would be connected into the sanitary sewer facilities.
Okay, so currently the system includes some gravity lines picking up the sanitary flows from each building and directing it to to a a pump station, a low-pressure pump station adjacent to the the fire tank. And it it will force through a force main, pump the sewage out of the project to through the Howell Road. And then north to Business Thirty-three and then east along Business Thirty-three and then down Fairfield Road to the proposed pump state, regional pump station.
Okay, and the pumps, the the low-pressure pump, again, that is not a burden on the town. That is a privately owned, maintained facility by the property.
That's correct.
Okay. I think we should talk a little bit about the trash compactors' locations and the refuse and recycling locations and the methods that you've taken to minimize their appearance.
Okay, so I mentioned before during the landscaping description that the there are trash compactors at both ends of each building. It's shown right next to the ramps that enter the building on each side of each building. And it was our intent to buffer the compactor from visibility from all directions. So our intent was to provide the the screening on the opposite end of the drive aisles instead of providing it adjacent to each trash compactor. Mainly because of the operation of the trash compactors are within the loading zones themselves. So that was our intent.
Can I, can I make a comment, please?
Please.
You you've provided testimony that you don't believe you finalized exactly what type of manufacturing may end up going in these buildings. Is that correct? They're just being set up for for tendencies to come?
That's correct, Mister Chair. We're not, the applicant is not presumptuous that he has an approval and until this board grants an approval, we're not going to the marketplace.
I I would caution you that if you end up with a food stuff type of client, having that kind of greenery around the trash compactor is going to probably cause you some agita in regards to meeting those kind of requirements for food stuff type of of tenants. I'm not sure what the board or our professionals recommend would would recommend differently, but I think just heavy a a better, nicer-looking fencing system may be a better option.
We, good guidance, and if it's the uniform recommendation of your your board and professionals, we will adopt it.
But just just so the board members are aware, though, we require it to actually be screened with landscaping. So if in fact we switch that and we don't want the landscaping there, they're going to require relief.
Fair enough.
Yeah, Mister Chair, also, just so you know, it's not a a really small strip. It's not like a typical parking lot island strip where this planting is. It's a, you know, decently wide area, so there's actually like spruce trees in here. It's it's not just little shrubs or or tiny arborvitaries.
Fair enough.
Let's see. Mister Lionel, I think we're we're up to the monument sign locations and confirming that the signs will be conforming with the ordinance. So could you identify where the monument signs are to be installed?
Is there are two monument signs proposed. One is along Oakerson Road frontage to the east of the driveway. And that was relocated, obviously, we proposed it on the on the west side, but because of the cemetery, we we obviously want to avoid any kind of disturbance over there, so we did relocate it to the east side of that driveway. And the second freestanding sign is located along the Howell Road frontage to the north of of that driveway. Both monument signs conform with the ordinance requirements as far as height area and setback. Further testimony regarding the details of those signs can be provided by the architect.
So I I have to ask you a question because the information that I have shows three signs, right? Two monument signs, one near Oakerson, one near Howell Road, right? That's what you just said, Pat?
Yes.
And then four wall signs. Are you going to defer the wall sign stuff to the architect? Is that what you're doing?
Yes.
Okay, so then I'll I'll, I will wait on my comment.
Very much, okay. Mister Chair, that is concludes my direct examination of Mister Patrick Linum this evening. I I did want him to confirm receipt of the staff reports and confirm that reports that were recently received will require further response, which we commit to to undertake. He and and Mister Linum, if you could on the record, confirm receipt of those reports and confirm that it is the direction of your client to address those outstanding comments.
Yes, so we did receive the CME letter dated August thirty-first, two thousand and one. And also the Avakin letter dated August thirty-first, two thousand and one. And we reviewed the comments and we intend to comply with the recommendations.
And and I I want to make a point, Mister Chair and board members, the fact that we got letters on August thirty-one is no, we we take no umbrage with it, your professionals are were reviewing plans that we generated during the month of August. This has been an an active exchange, so the delivery of reports to us in August thirty-first is was just fine. We appreciated that we got them before the hearing. I have, so at this point, Mister Chair, I turn to you procedurally as to whether we proceed with the next witness or the board, board professionals and the public examine Mister Linum, I defer to you.
Just before you get to that, Mister Pape.
Yes.
Did we, have we identified all of the relief that's required here? Or is that going to be another witness?
Let's see. The, what, there, I, I, because the, there is design waiver. At this juncture, I I believe it's an accurate statement that there are no variances, I just would ask.
I don't, I want to ask our professionals about that as well. But I just want to know in terms of what you believe you need, you've you've placed it all on the record?
The 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 architect will go through certain elements of the building design.
Okay.
Waiver.
Ken, did, did you talk about the the curb cuts every sixty-five feet?
No, thank you, Mister Linum. Let's, let's speak to the handicap curb cuts and where they have been placed. And describe the the separation between them. And then I believe there is some technical relief related to the curb cuts on portions of the the perimeter of the site, please.
Yeah, so we we made sure that the curb cuts are every sixty-five feet along each building frontage, fronting the parking lots as well as per in accordance with ADA requirements for crossings to get in as well as at the driveways. And we intend to comply with a further recommendation of the the board's engineer to provide a turnaround where necessary. However, we we are not providing a curb cut along areas of the sidewalk that are not fronting a parking lot or have no no necessary need for people to provide access wherever there is no parking or a direct route to a public right-of-way. So the, I believe there's some areas along the front of building A. And then there's some areas south of building B that are simply sidewalks and there is no curb cuts along those areas.
And that, you you've shared with me that you felt there was no utility for those curb cuts. If the technical requirement of having curb cuts every sixty-five feet is is the board's pleasure, is there anything physically that prevents you from doing that?
No.
We just didn't see the utility except in the areas where there was entrance to the building. But, so there is a request for waiver relief for that. And if.
Also, also, I guess this piece of property, the way that it it sits, it has two front yards and two side yards, would would that be accurate?
I'd add. It's, we definitely have two front yards.
I would say yes.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so I just, you know, I I heard the testimony, but I just want to make sure and because we've had this with several other applications. You know, whether Mister Pape is for one of your witnesses or Laura or Jen, if you want to chime in, is there any outdoor storage that does not comply with the ordinance?
We propose no outdoor storage on the site.
Well, Ken, are you aware that there's a recent decision that if you have like a trailer sitting there in a quote-unquote "front yard" that can, that constitutes outdoor storage?
A trailer, so there's no separate trailer storage on here, there're loading docks where a trailer.
But if, are you gonna, are you telling me that at night, every single one of those loading docks is going to be empty?
Well, I think the, I don't know that the loading docks, Jen, was so much the issue with the prior application. They were having trucks sitting for indeterminate amounts of time in a parking area because they couldn't get into the loading docks. So I think, I I think Jen's question needs to be answered, but also do you have an area where you're just going to have either containers or trucks that are waiting for access to the loading docks, either to drop off or to pick up materials?
Patrick, I think that that's an important question for you to answer. And the board can see the the plan and this is a redesign, but I think if you could speak to that.
Yes, the 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 prior plan did include trailer storage along the western portion of building A. However, those trailer storage parking stalls have been removed from the application.
So that there is the, but there there's loading dock. So there is, there's loading docks and trailers could be there. I don't have an answer as to whether a trailer, they would not be used for storage. They may be being, they may be, there may be packing of them. They may be there for an overnight period. I can get that information from my client. My question to the board and to your professionals is, have we met the direction of your ordinance and that case by removing the trailer storage areas that were just for trailer storage?
Ms. Bean? With regard to non-loading docks, if that's the case, that there are no areas in either of the front yards that are being used, you know, as just a staging area, you know, waiting for other things to happen, that's, I think that complies. I guess my follow-up question to that would be, in the areas that were previously designated for that kind of storage use, what's being conducted in those areas in the revised plan?
Sure. Patrick, first, please, if you, please confirm that the trailer storage areas in any front yard have been removed from the plan.
That is correct.
Okay, and if you could then share with the board the answer to Mr. Cuchero's question about how did you repurpose the available land?
Okay, so we had trailer storage along the west side of building A, and we are proposing stormwater management within the farmland buffer. However, in order to comply with the ordinance requirements for the farmland buffer, we have pulled all the stormwater management outside the farmland buffer and put it in place of the prior storage spaces. So that's how the plan was updated.
Okay, I think with regard to the issue that Jen raised, since you are coming back, let's take a closer look at that between now and next time and, you know, come to a conclusion on that. But with regard to, you know, non-storage bay, outdoor storage of trucks, it's based on your testimony, it sounds like you would comply, but I would also defer to Jen and to Laura on that.
Okay. We, it is our ambition to be consistent with your goals. I, Mr. Chair, board members, Mr. Linum is available for your further questions.
Can I ask a few questions?
Yes, you may.
The guard shack is a different witness gonna cover that?
No, I can cover that.
Very good, Patrick.
So we are proposing an optional guard shack at the northwest corner of building A. And it was purely optional based on what tenants we get there. And I believe there are some concerns about trucks backing out out of that location. And so, you know, the trucks do have an option to wrap around the site and not interfere with the guard shack. So it's really intended to be an optional item depending on a tenant for the building.
Do you anticipate that this would be constructed in phases?
No.
And it looks like the town has an ordinance regarding soil removal. Do you anticipate any soil removal or fill more than 600 cubic yards?
Yes, yes, we do. I mean, there is a significant grade change. We are looking to balance the site, which means, you know, try not to have any import or export. However, that, you know, we will need to export some soil from the, in excess of 600 cubic yards, yes.
And you would be compliant with the ordinance relative to that?
Yes.
Yes.
And public sidewalk, so you have sidewalk proposed along Howell Road and Oakerson Road, but you do have a portion of frontage along Michael Curtin Lane?
Correct.
And no sidewalk was proposed there, so I would just note that for the board because that would need relief.
Okay. If there was, if the direction was to have a sidewalk there, can be accommodated. Just, it appeared not to have any logic, but.
What is your opinion on that? It looks like it's just a dead end. It doesn't really have any.
Correct, and it's just a lane, so typically you wouldn't anticipate sidewalks along the lane. So I would defer to the board that you provided along the roadway frontages. And given that Michael Curtin Lane is in fact a lane, it may be appropriate to grant a waiver.
I would take your advice. Thank you.
And I guess one final point, what are you proposing by way of frontage improvements?
As far as roadway frontage, we are proposing to dedicate right of way to Howell Road in order to meet the master plan half width. We also, as you mentioned, proposing sidewalks along Howell Road. Also, you know, the street trees along both roads. So those are their improvements.
No widening?
There is a slight widening along Howell Road in order to accommodate the sidewalk and the proposed ingress to that driveway.
But you don't maintain it along the entire frontage?
No, we didn't feel it was necessary for to go, just in the northern section of Howell Road along the property frontage. As you can see, the property juts in across that area. So that's the reason for the dedication in that area and also the widening.
I recommend it consist, the widening improvements be consistent along the frontage, specifically along Howell Road. Oakerson Road I recognize is small, but I do think, given the size of this application, that's a small question for me to ask.
And the purpose of that is to allow trucks to come off of 33 business to queue in turning into the site? Is that your?
Yeah, just to provide additional. I mean, they're providing the necessary dedication. I think they should provide the necessary half width paving. Beyond that, what about utility extensions? I just want to make sure you're also familiar with the town's road opening ordinance and the necessary restoration requirements for utility extensions to the site?
Yes, and we will comply with those.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I have no other questions for this witness.
Thank you.
May I, for clarification, the road improvements along Howell Road, Ms. Newman, could you give us some specifics on the record so that we can address them?
So as I, as I believe Mr. Linum indicated, he has some level of widening proposed. I just requested he continue it along the frontage.
Got it, okay.
Mr. Pape, do you have any objection to that?
I do not have the answer, but I am sending a message to my client to get the, I think that that's fine. But I need permission. If you move forward to the next question, I won't delay you and I'll come up with, I'll have a response promptly.
Thank you. Ms. Newman, does that conclude your questioning?
Yes, it does, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anything from the Spiro or Ms. Bean?
Not from me at this time, thank you.
Okay, anything, anything else from the board?
I have a question.
Sure.
Howell North Little League, how far away is this project from their land?
I wanna bring it to the other exhibit, so I can bring that out so everyone can see it. Just so we can show it on the aerial.
As you're doing that, Mr. Chair and board members, the request of Ms. Newman for the road improvements along all of the frontage on Howell Road is an acceptable condition. The applicant will amend the plans to reflect that.
Thank you, Mr. Pape.
So I'm going to the aerial, the overall aerial. And you could see that the property in proximity to the Little League field, it's a few hundred feet to the east of the Little League field. Like as you see on aerial, can get a measurement here, one second. So I'll get approximate measurement from, I'll take it from the corner of the cemetery to the entrance, closest entrance, and it looks like roughly 500 feet.
Mr. Linum, can you provide testimony that when trucks enter or exit the site off of Oakerson, there is no reason for them to traverse into the other lane in order to complete their movement? There's enough room, enough radii coming out of your site that they can immediately go into their particular lane?
Yes, that was, there's a few circulation comments from your board's engineer, which we will accommodate to modify or increase some of the radii to prevent that from happening.
Okay, so we'll see that on the next round.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
What are your hours of operation? Is it a weekend also?
We do envision that this building would be 24/7. We don't know who the tenants would be, but these types of buildings are 24/7 operation.
Joe, you stole my questions, but thank you.
Anybody got any other questions?
Yep, Brian, I have a question. Maybe the parameters of what's considered light manufacturing, is it product specific? Is it output per hour? Is it trucks? I mean, that's a wide category because we maybe get a definition on that? Maybe one of our professionals or Ron?
Well, I think it's a question for the applicant in at first blush, so that, you know, before we say it's permitted, we understand, you know, fully what it is they're proposing. So, Mr. Pape, I don't know if you want to address it, or do you want your professional to address it?
I think that we can attempt to address it. What we did was to look at the ordinance and what were permitted uses and what permitted uses did we have adequate parking for? And amongst those permitted uses was the warehouse manufacturing, packaging, and assembly. So I don't have a textbook definition of manufacturing, just as it's used in your ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Pape.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I was gonna ask if anybody had any other questions, so I'll be, go ahead.
I was just wondering, I don't have the ordinance in front of me. I was just wondering if someone else had the ordinance and could just read the definition out of the ordinance.
Give me a minute. I mean, you guys could probably go on to something else while I look for this.
And I guess my other question, Mr. Pape, is, do you consider this two principal uses? Or is the office the principal use with an accessory warehouse, since the warehouse is serving the individual offices?
So my opinion is that these are, the office is the ancillary use. That's where the administrative element of the business would occur. But it's, that's really the tail and not the dog. It's the larger space where the business is conducted and the offices are intended to be where the administrative elements would take place. So I don't see them as two uses. I see them as, one is ancillary to the other.
Okay.
Yeah. Certainly, not rent, office space is not rented out separate from warehouse and warehouse is not rented out separate from office.
And to the extent that there's a light manufacturing use, would there be a light manufacturing use that has an office and a warehouse?
There would be, all uses would have an office element. And the space that's shown, the large space could be set up for assembly. It could be set up for packaging. It could be set up for simple storage or a combination. Most of the businesses that we'd be looking for would have storage as part of their activity. So I hope that answers the question.
It sort of does. So I guess in the instance where you have some sort of manufacturing that's going on, based upon that answer, would it be that manufacturing is the principal use in the office and the warehouse or accessory to the manufacturing?
I'd say that's a very fair description. When you go into a facility that's doing assembly, or there's, there's storage of the materials that are being assembled. There's the assembly activity and there's the storage of the assembled materials all before they leave the building.
But it's all integrated. They're not operating independently. It's one single use.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Cuchero, our ordinance does not have a definition of manufacturing.
Yeah, all right. So that is, so you've heard the definition that the applicant has provided. So I think it's something for the board to consider as to whether that falls within the definition of manufacturing. I think what we'll do, similar to, we've had some other cases where the ordinance lacks a definition. I'd like to do a little bit of research on some case law and, you know, sort of commonly accepted dictionary definitions. And, you know, we'll readdress this at the next meeting to make a formal determination as to what we believe the definition is and whether this fits within it.
Thank you.
And we'll gladly work with you on that. There, the definition of manufacturing, I think, does appear as a footnote in the ordinance. I think it's actually in the permitted use tables for non-residential zones. But no definition, just the terminology manufacturing. And in SED, manufacturing is one of the permitted uses.
I agree. It's in Schedule 1 under permitted uses. Manufacturing is there with a footnote. And it says, the footnote says, includes apparel, similar finished products made from fabrics, electronic and electrical equipment, fabricated metal products, food and kindred services, furniture and fixtures, leather products, lumber and wood products, paper and allied products, photographic equipment, medical, optical goods, watches, clocks, printing and publishing, glass products and textile products. Like you said, Mr. Pape, that's a footnote in the schedule of permitted uses, but in our actual definition section, there is no formal definition.
Yeah, I think there's some guidance there and there's some, definitely an opportunity to be more specific.
Okay, so we'll revisit that at the next meeting.
Then, not to rush anyone, but with permission, oh, as to the public, Mr. Chair, are examination of witnesses one by one or at a specific time of the hearing?
I think we should, I think we should do it at the specific time of the hearing. But if you're completed with this witness and nobody else on the board has any other questions, I would like to take a five-minute break.
Acceptable to the applicant. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We will now take a five-minute recess. They'll be back at 9:15. The planning board will now reconvene.
Hey, Mr. Pape, your next witness, please.
Thank you. So for the record, Patrick Linum's direct testimony this evening has been concluded. He will remain with us throughout the hearing and will remain available for examination. The, Mr. Chair, board members, our next witness is Dr. Raymond Walker, the environmental scientist who has worked with us on this project. If we could bring him in, and then we'll take a couple of minutes to swear him.
Can you stop sharing your screen? Can you stop sharing your screen? Thank you.
Okay, is Ray?
I did have Dr. Walker on here, hold on.
There he is.
Okay.
Fine, counselor, could we swear in Dr. Walker?
Oh, Mr. Cuchero is not back yet, hold on.
Wait a minute.
Mr. Cuchero, I have just asked that Mr., that Dr. Walker be sworn in if you do the necessary.
You swear or affirm the testimony about to give this board the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Raymond Walker. W R A Y M O N D W A L K E R.
Dr. Walker, would you share with us your education and your professional background?
Sure, I have a Bachelor of Science in Environmental Biology from Manhattan College and a PhD in Ecology from Rutgers University. I was previously employed by the US Army Corps of Engineers Philadelphia District as a regulatory specialist and I left there as Chief of their Surveillance and Enforcement Section. For the last 35 years, I've been in the private consulting business. I've been with Colliers Engineering for the last 29 years. I'm currently the head of the Geo-Environmental Division. I have testified as an expert in federal court, state court, as well as multiple planning boards and zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey, including, I believe, this board in the past, as an environmental specialist.
Mr. Chairman, may Dr. Walker testify this evening in his area of expertise as an environmental scientist?
We will accept his credentials, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Walker, I think that the best way for you to present your knowledge and findings of the site would be to describe the presentation, the materials and presentation that was made earlier this summer to the Environmental Commission. And if you could do that in a narrative, I won't interrupt you.
Sure, we prepared the environmental impact report for this project and the results of the report was submitted to the township for review. We also reviewed the results of that report with the Environmental Commission during a previous meeting this summer. I'll kind of summarize some of the, some of the issues that we addressed. Some of them have been discussed by Mr. Lyman, but I'll go over them briefly also. If you remember the low-altitude aerial photo that Mr. Lyman showed you, it basically shows you that the entire property is an active agricultural field. By reviewing historical aerial photography, it's been an active agricultural field since at least 1931. Back then, there were some farmhouse structures, some farmhouse and some other farmland structures. More recently, some newer structures were constructed on the property. Mr. Lyman, I believe, pointed them out in his aerial map. The older structures were demolished in 2013, so there really are no original farmland structures on the property today. The property does not contain any freshwater wetlands. We submitted an application for a letter of interpretation to the DEP. The DEP issued a letter of interpretation on January 17, 2018, confirming of the absence of wetlands on the property. That LOI or letter of interpretation is valid until January 17 of 2023. The property also does not contain any streams, lakes, rivers or other water bodies and it's not located within the flood hazard area of any water body. All drainage from the property, as Mr. Lyman indicated, is directed to adjacent properties via overland flow that eventually find their way into Berks Creek, which is attributable to the Manasqua River. But again, there's no flood hazard areas on the property, so there's no need for any flood hazard permits. There's no wetlands on the property, so there's no need for any wetland permits. We also searched the local records as well as the DEP records and there are no historic resources on the property. As Mr. Lyman indicated, there is a cemetery located on Block 164 Lot 6, which is northwest of the subject property. And that is, I think Ms. Beaman indicated, is known as the Oakerson Cemetery or also the Jerseyville Cemetery. But there's no work associated with this project proposed in that cemetery. We also did a search for threatened endangered species on the property. We submitted a request to the New Jersey Natural Heritage Program and in a letter dated April 5, 2021, they confirmed that there is no threatened endangered species habitat on the property. So pretty much it's a clean property in terms of sensitive environmental areas. But since it is a farm field, we also conducted some analysis of the soils, since farmland soils are sometimes known to contain residues of pesticides. So we did a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 study on the property. Those investigations found some slightly elevated levels of arsenic and dieldrin in the soils. The exceedances for arsenic were found mainly in the northeast and central portions of the property, whereas the exceedances for dieldrin were found mainly in the northeast corner of the property. The DEP residential limits for arsenic are 19 parts per million. The levels that we found on the site, in the central part of the site, in the northeastern part of the site, ranged from 22 parts per million to approximately 39 parts per million, so slightly elevated, nothing that's too severe. The NJDEP residential limits for dieldrin are .034 parts per million and they were mainly found in the northeast corner of the property where the levels were slightly elevated. They ranged from .034 parts per million to .038 parts per million. The project does have a licensed site remediation professional associated with it. It will develop a remediation plan for these soils. There's a couple of options that they will have for remediation. One could be the removal of the contaminated soil. Second option would be engineering or institutional controls, for instance, a cap. The cap could be the building itself or the parking lot with some type of conservation or deed notice over those areas. The third could possibly be a blending of the soil so that they were, their levels reduced below the residential standards. So, you know, from a standpoint, this is probably a very nonsensitive environmental property because it's been far and all these years and it doesn't contain any steep slopes, wetlands, flood hazard areas, threatened endangered species or cultural resources on the property. And that probably, that's pretty much summarizes my testimony before the Environmental Commission about a month or two ago.
Dr. Walker, is it, if you could confirm that the applicant has made the commitment and we can place it on the record here, that the LSRP's pursuit of the response action outcome and a remediation plan is a, would be a condition of the development of the property?
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, I have nothing further of Dr. Walker. I was pleased that he was with us throughout the entire process and provided the guidance that he's just shared with you this evening. He is available to you and your professionals for examination.
Thank you. Since our environmental liaison had to recuse himself, rely on to our other professionals, is there, is there any other further discussion that our environmental commission is going to want to see, such as documentation about what this LSRP is proposing? Is that something that they would typically want to see?
I don't know that it's something they, you know, an LSRP acts as an in-between, between a developer and the state. An LSRP is tasked with developing a remediation plan and long as the development receives an RAO, which is a remedial action outcome, it is acceptable for development. I'm not sure that it's within our purview or honestly even the environmental commission's purview to critique another LSRP's plan without necessarily that licensure. But they are permitted to do that, they do act as a liaison again between the state and the developer and I'm comfortable with the LSRP developing that remediation plan and as long as they receive an RAO, I believe that that's a limit of our jurisdiction.
And what is, what does typically custom regards to being able to build? Do they need to get that RAO before they even begin to do any other improvements to the site? Or is it something that they can get moving forward while they are continuing to develop more of the site?
It depends upon where the contamination is in connection with the development and how they propose to remediate it. So if it's going to be removed, for example, then the area is excavated and it's removed offsite. If it's part of a cap, it's usually part of the development plan. So it could occur prior, but most likely it occurs, you know, at some level during the construction process.
Or, for example, if it's groundwater remediation and Doc, Dr. Walker's here, so you can chime in anytime. But let's say it's groundwater remediation and as Laura said, they excavated out the contaminated soil. It could just be a process of monitoring wells, making sure that the attenuation over time, you know, remediates the issue. So it's not, it would not preclude development if that were the, if that were the case.
I just know that we've had other contaminated sites and, you know, that remediation plan or what they're doing to remediate is somehow put on the record and there isn't any report or anything like that that I'm seeing from an LS, the LSRP indicating what the plan is. Is that something that we, we should have for the record?
I'll make, Mr. Chair, we'd be, as the LSRP develops the plan and as that data and those documents become available, we'll share them, we'll file them with your board secretary in real time as they occur.
Okay, very good, thank you. Anybody else have any further comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, I do. So I just want to be very clear, Mr. Walk, or Dr. Walker, I'm sorry. I married to a PhD, she would have just hit me if she heard me call you that way.
Well, I'm not that sensitive, so it's okay.
What, what documents precisely were presented to the Environmental Commission?
The Environmental Commission was provided with a complete set, or was a complete copy of our environmental report as well as a copy of a natural resource inventory that was prepared for the property, as well as, I believe, site plans that went along with that, with that application.
We did not distribute the site plans to the Environmental Commission.
No, okay.
I don't, in turn, the township to doing that. But they had.
Every time there's a submission to the board, when they have their meetings, they get the entire submission to review.
Were the results of the ground penetrating radar submitted to the Environmental Commission?
That I'm not, I'm not familiar with. I know that the environmental impact report did contain copies of the letters of interpretation, the natural heritage database search, any other documents that we had received from the DEP or other regulatory agencies.
Okay. Also, I just want to kind of better understand, I want to harmonize the work that you performed with some of the testimony we heard from the engineer. From your perspective, what is the significance, if any, of the anomalous results that came from the ground penetrating radar, sort of on the border of the property?
Well, again, it's not really my area of expertise. You know, it's certainly not an environmental issue as much as it is more of a, I'm not sure what category it would fall into, but I'm really not an expert on cemeteries or ground penetrating radar. I'd have to defer to, you know, the individual from our office.
Well, from a, from an environmental standpoint, from, from what you are an expert in, are there any environmental, is there any environmental significance to those results?
Well, again, the little I know anomalies could be various things. It could have been something where someone dug a hole and then filled it back in, so now there's a disruption to the soil. It could have been that someone buried a log and that's decomposing underground. So it could be any type of subsurface disturbance that's not typical of what you would find in a farming operation. I mean, it wouldn't be uncommon, wouldn't be uncommon for a farmer to, you know, they used to dispose a lot of their garbage by digging holes in the exterior parts of their property and burying their garbage there, it could be something like that. Or it could be something associated with the cemetery, it'd be difficult for me to, to.
So from your perspective, is it enough, again, for what you are an expert in, is it enough to simply identify an area that prohibits excavation? Or, you know, is an LSRP going to require some greater certainty as to what it is that's generating the anomalous result to determine if there, you know, needs to be a remediation?
I believe they did a series of soil tests throughout the site and the only areas where they found, again, contaminated levels were in the central and northeastern portion of the site.
Right, so that means.
I know, in terms of whether or not the LSRP reviewed those GPR results, I don't know. I'd have to check with them, I can get back to you on that. If whether or not they, they reviewed those results and felt there was any concern from an environmental standpoint that they might represent something like an underground storage tank, I could, I could check on that, I don't have that information.
But what you're saying is that, what you are confident in saying is that there was soil testing that was performed in the same area that revealed the anomalous results?
Well, not in the immediate area where the, where the anomalous results were detected because if, again, those anomalous results were some type of grave, we wouldn't want to disrupt that. So we stayed away from it, but they were done in close proximity, but not in that exact area.
So I guess that's my ultimate question, though. We don't know what's under there, it could be, you know, remains, it could be, you know, human remains, which everyone would want to have a respect for, you know, not disturbing. But it might be something different, you know, that requires some attention. So I guess my question is, is there a balancing test? Is there a requirement that there be further, further testing? Is just leaving it alone, saying whatever it is, we will never know, but we're not going to touch it and hopefully it's not anything dangerous? How is it that we, you know, come to a satisfactory conclusion on how to address it?
I guess I take the reasonable man approach in that because it's in such close proximity to a graveyard where, you know, there was subsurface disturbance and, you know, placement of graves that those, it's a greater likelihood that if there are anomalies there, that they're associated with that activity. But I can't provide you with any greater level of assurance than that.
I think, Mr. Pape, what I would like, considering that you're coming back, is between now and then, we can certainly discuss it, but on the record at the next hearing, I think we need to delve into, you know, whatever the legal requirements are, whether it be under the Cemetery Act, whether it's under some administrative code regulations, you know, whether there are county issues involved, since they're the ones that have identified, you know, the area, whether historic preservation comes into play, whatever the factors are that would, that may govern it or if there is nothing, you know, that, that governs it and there's no specific regulation that needs to be followed. I think we need to come to a very firm conclusion on that between now and the next meeting and then present it both to the board and the public at that time.
Mr. Cuchero, I have some similar thoughts and a couple that go a couple steps further. I think it's a great idea. And I also think that consulting with the LSRP to make certain that he is fully informed and my client has told me he is fully informed, but we'll have him present his, that he is fully informed and what steps he believes needs to be done. But reviewing the Cemetery Act, reviewing the administrative code as is applicable and being in contact with the vital statistics people at the county, I think all of that is good counsel, we'll do it.
Okay, right, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anybody got any else, any other questions for this witness?
Dr. Walker, I have a question. Sure. I'm actually going to ask you on your foresight. So let's say this project passes and all through construction or even whatever the warehouse is storing or containing, do you see an environmental issue with, right across the street is Howell Point Swamp Club, there's at any given time hundreds of kids, 400 feet away, Howell Central, Howell North Little League, at any given time, hundreds of kids? Do you see any issue with wafting of substances or anything that can get them sick or ill? Or that's what? Do you see any issue with wafting of substances or anything that can get them sick or ill, or that's what I'm asking you foresight?
Yeah, I mean, based on the design that I've seen, everything is going to be enclosed interior, any any processing. Uh, or light manufacturing is going to occur is going to be inside. And from what I understand also, there's there. Will not or may not be the use of any hazardous chemicals. Uh, we can confirm that, but, uh, again, there's no, you know, exterior smoke stacks. Uh, emission options, everything is going to be contained internally. So I I don't see that as being a a real, uh, area of concern considering this proposed use.
Thank you.
Hey, any other comments from the board? Mr. Gerato? Do you have a comment? Oh, you just muted yourself.
No, I'm I'm good. I'm.
Okay.
I'm okay.
Hey, Mr. Pape?
Yes, Mr. Chair, wh- wh- I'd like to discuss. We have two additional witnesses. Uh, the architect's testimony is is comprehensive. Um, it's I think that we can accomplish it in the next fifteen or twenty minutes. I'm not certain what the examination time would be. And then there is the, um, traffic consultant, uh, whose testimony is longer. Um, what I would ask is, with permission, we present to you the architect. Um, and at the conclusion of the architect's testimony, we would ask that the. Um, we begin our our affirmative presentation at your next meeting with the responses that we've assembled and with the traffic. Um, testimony, um, and it does allow some time if the chair chose to have a, um, the. To introduce the public or allow the public to participate, um, but.
Now, Mr. Pape, uh, the, since you're looking to get some advice as well from this meeting. There were some comments about, uh, uh, changing the radii coming in in and out of the site. I'm assuming that that's going to be real important for the traffic engineer to 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 discuss as well. So I would agree with you. I think if if the plan is updated, uh, at the next meeting. You may even want to have Mr. Lyman, you know, discuss that first and then carry.
Mr. Chair, I do envision that a second hearing would begin with an affirmative statements from Mr. Lyman. Of the revisions that were made responsive to your comments tonight and from the staff's comments, and then we would go to the traffic.
Fantastic. I appreciate the dialogue so that the public knows what is, uh, what to expect at the next meeting. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, so again, with your permission, we'll present, uh, the, um, the architect. Uh, and he will be the last affirmative professional witness that we present this evening.
Thank you.
So Sean.
Yes, sir.
Okay, y- you're up and if, uh, miss our, uh, Sean Nager is our. Um, architect, if we could have him sworn, we'll then place his credentials before you before he begins his testimony.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
First name is Sean, S E A N. Last name is Nager, N A E G E R.
Mr. Nager, would you share with all of us your education and your professional background?
Certainly, uh, I have a bachelor's of architecture from Mississippi State University. Been practicing architecture for over twenty-four years. I am a project manager with M and H Architects, have been with them for over fifteen years. Uh, I've been involved with or directly responsible for the design of over, oh, close to four million square feet. Of this building type within the state of New Jersey and over eight and a half million, uh, nationally. I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey and I am in good standing.
Mr. Chair, may Mr. Nager testify as an architect this evening?
He may, we'll accept his credential.
Thank you. Um, gonna ask if you, are you prepared to screen share, Mr. Nager?
I am.
And any exhibit that you present this evening would be an exhibit previously submitted to the 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 board at least twenty forty-eight hours ago?
Correct.
Okay, then I'm going to ask if you could introduce to us the building and I'm going to ask if you could. This, this is the a perspective of the building prepared by your office?
Yes, sir. It's a perspective of, I believe, building, uh, A. From the northwest or northeast corner.
What one, I want to make certain, so the the building that you're presenting to the board is your design. But I would ask that you confirm that you have sought the counsel of Ms. Beam in the design of the building.
Yeah, we would, it's it's not very often that we get to work directly with the town, uh, like we've had with, uh, uh, Ms. Beam. Uh, she was able to direct us in our interpretation of the Howell Land Use Ordinances, especially, uh, section one eighty-eight dash two twenty-eight.
And I don't want the, I don't want the board to think that means that Ms. Beam has approved this building. I just want the board to be aware that her her guidance has been.
Hey, I don't get comments, I don't get positive comments often. Don't interrupt comments positive to move my direction.
Apologies, apologies. Sean, you've got some more nice things to say about Jennifer?
Yeah, no, it's been great. Like I said, we haven't, not very often are we given access to. Uh, the planner, uh, as as much as we've had and she's she's been invaluable with this, uh. The development of the project, uh, as far as we are at this point.
If you would, let's go through a description of the building. Things that are important are materials, colors, textures, and focal points.
Certainly, um. The the buildings are designed with roof offsets, panel laps, as well as color blocking. Color changes along all the facades. So you're seeing two facades here right now, but. These these changes and and the manipulations of the facade carry all the way around all four, uh, elevations. The the variation along the elevations reduce, helps to reduce, uh, any monotony. And provides an aesthetically pleasing architectural composition that's in keeping. With the overall size of these buildings and in keeping with what we believe is the intent of the ordinance requirements. The concrete walls have reveals that you can see those, those would be the horizontal and vertical. Uh, lines that you see within, uh, the, uh, the rendering. Uh, these reveals help to, uh, separate paint colors and provide color blocking patterns to minimize the scale of the elevations. Over twenty-five percent of this of this building's facade, uh, is designed as office entrances. Uh, includes such design elements as, uh, notched building corners, which you can see. Now, reveal patterns, color blocking, large expanses of glass, aluminum canopies. Uh, all these, uh, design elements highlight the formalized, uh, and landscape entrance plazas. Uh, that we've worked with, uh. With Patrick and his team to develop. Thirty-five percent of of the building's walls are not, will not be in the same plane along, uh, the dock walls. But in addition, uh, the the shorter walls or the ends of the buildings will continue that same treatment all the way around. It's, you know, the the changes of these wall planes occur repetitively. And they're spaced at a distance that is in scale with the building of the size. Um. One, one thing that I know, um, Jennifer and, uh, my associate, uh, Tom McCormick. Here in the office have had discussions about is the three-foot deep offsets at dock walls. That requirement would, um, really interfere with the operations, the interior operations. Of a dock wall, um. And is is really not necessarily the best way to design. A warehouse or distribution center or, uh, buildings of this type. And that would be one, one area where we would like to get some relief on. Uh, in consultation with Ms. Beam, it was also suggested that the building. Uh, have a water table course around the base, which this rendering currently does not show. Uh, when we come back to you, we will revise that to, uh, represent, uh, that suggestion. Uh, like I said, the architectural team will, uh, work with Ms. Bean to satisfy this request. The proposed maximum, uh, building height does not exceed the forty-five feet as calculated per chapter one eighty-eight. Of the Howell, uh, land use ordinances. And all, um, HVAC equipment will be placed behind the first, uh, structural bay. So that's approximately sixty feet, uh, back from the parapet wall. This will allow for the parapet walls, uh, to be used as screening, uh, the HVAC equipment, uh, from all public right of ways. Uh, the materials, again, that are being used, uh, for both of these buildings are, like I said, insulated. Tilt wall construction panels, uh, prefinished metal copings. Aluminum composite metal canopies, aluminum storefront curtain wall assemblies with low E insulated gray light glass. There, it will have a a significant amount of, for a building of this nature, a significant amount of, uh, glass. Uh, you'll see that we have, um, these different, uh, these areas as it marches down each side. Uh, those are glass windows to bring sunlight into the building. And, uh, the the use of all of the, uh, reveals that we have on this building. Uh, to provide shadow lines and create a visual texture, uh, to the concrete panels. The colors that we typically use for a project of this nature. Uh, there would be four neutral colors, one being white, uh, at the, uh, office entrances to. Kind of punctuate where those entrances are, uh, and then, uh, four. Uh, or excuse me, three different shades of gray. There would be a light, medium, and a dark gray. So, uh, the light is like this area right here, the medium is this lower band and the darker will be. Uh, these vertical elements that you see marching down both sides.
Sean, I have a couple of questions for you, if I may.
Certainly.
So, um, you listened earlier to Patrick Lyman describe landscaping elements and. Perimeter landscaping elements and parking lot landscaping elements.
Yes.
I would ask if you could talk about, talk, discuss with the board how the landscaping and your building design work together. Talking of framing and filtering, if you could point that out.
Sure, um, Patrick and in my design team and his design team, we we did work. Diligently to make sure that we were not only providing a landscape that that functions well, but it also provides. And filters, there's there's buffer and buffers and it also frames the views. Onto the site from Howell Road and, uh, Oakuson Road. But additionally, the landscape design enhances the overall appearance of just the project in general. Uh, it enhances the appearance of the buildings and and the entire site.
Would you also talk about the signage on this building?
Excuse me, yeah, uh, currently. I know, uh, on one of the submittals that, uh, we had, uh, on the elevations, there was some notation. That, uh, was not removed from the elevations, uh, about signage, proposed signage. We're not proposing any signage on these buildings other than the, uh, numerals, uh. For the police and fire safety purposes, there there won't be any signs on these buildings.
And 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 that revision is something that the client has gone over with you. That with the client's comfortable relying on the monument sign for identification and the numerals for safety purposes.
Correct.
Okay. Have one more. As part of your responsibilities, did you just, did you create? The monument signs that Mr. Lyman described to the board in his testimony?
Yes, and I'm going to switch the the view here right now and zoom in here. So this, this would be the monument signs, um, currently, like, uh, Mr. Lyman. Uh, testified earlier, there there's two proposed monument signs, one near the Oakerson Road driveway. And one near the Howell Road driveway, um, located per the civil drawings. Uh, the proposed signs, uh, will meet the signage requirements set forth in chapter two fifty-six of. The Code of the Township of Howell. Sign, uh, the signs are monument-based and ground-mounted horizontally. They do not exceed the twelve-foot length. By three-foot height, excluding the, uh, mounting base, which is less than, um, the maximum two-feet height. Uh, you can see the dimensions of the sign, uh, on clearly on this, uh, on this elevation. The base of the monument signs will be planted with shrubs and seasonal flowers, uh. The lighting of these signs will be an external spotlight, uh, these particular fixtures will be used. Uh, to light the monument signs. They shall be arranged so that the light source is screened from direct view by passersby. And so that the light is directed against the sign and doesn't shine onto, uh, a adjacent properties. Or blind motorists or pedestrians.
My last question to you is a very important one. I would ask that you'd, similar to Mr. Lyman's. Description of lead-like benefits and lead-like design, would you? The records, the lead-like design standards incorporated to this building?
Yeah, and this is something that we do in pretty much all of our buildings nowadays. Uh, it just makes sense, you know? We're supposed to be stewards of the environment and this is something that we do. Um, using, using the insulated, uh, concrete walls, for an example. Uh, there's very, very little waste in construction, in constructing these walls. The insulated, uh, nature of these panels will create an efficient, uh, wall system. Uh, thus reducing the, uh, energy consumption for conditioning the interior of these spaces. You know, we typically use a lighter and brighter, uh. Paint on these walls, uh, which helps reduce, uh, heat absorption and reduce the heat, uh, island effect. Uh, concrete and steel is used for this construction, uh, for the walls, floors, structural framing. And both of these materials, uh, utilize very high levels of recycled content. Uh, for the roof, we typically use a, um. A white TPO or a white, uh, EPDM roof, uh, that also helps to reduce the heat island effect. The glazing we use, uh, is, like I said earlier, a low E tinted glass. It reduces heat gain within the building. Uh, thus reducing energy consumption, uh, for conditioning, uh, the inside. We also provide, like I showed earlier, the clear story windows. They're used throughout our buildings, um. Throughout the building envelope to provide natural daylighting into the space, which helps reduce the electrical load for the building. Uh, we also will, uh, specify and utilize LED fixtures on the interior of the building. Obviously, that cuts down on the consumption of energy and provides a superior life cycle cost of benefit. We also will use occupancy sensors within the warehouse and offices. Uh, so if there's nobody in that particular area, its lights can be shut down. Uh, there's minimal HVAC loads for these buildings. They're typically, uh, heat only. And because of the, uh, the insulated walls and the insulated roof, uh, that heat is is, uh, kept to a minimum. During, uh, the summer months, we use the HVLS fans, uh, to destratify warm air. In the winter and provide, uh, cooling effects in the summer. So those, those are a few of them. I could go on, but, um, I I think it's, it's clear that. I, I think it's, it's clear that we will put. Very cost, very efficient cost savings and be responsible. For the environment when building these buildings.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Nager, if you could take one step further and say these are commitments that the applicant makes to the town.
Absolutely.
And upon which the town can appropriately, justifiably rely.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, Board Members, I have nothing further, Mr. Nager, Mr. Nager, is there anything further that you have to share with the board? Before we conclude your direct presentation?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nager, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
There's, is there any green aspect, you know, incorporated in this project, any solar panels or anything like that?
Yes, the solar, the roof will be designed. Per the, the new regulations that the governor has pushed. To be solar ready. That means. That means that there will be an additional five pounds per square foot of structural. Strength added to the steel design. And it also means that the, the roof insulation will have. At least the last layer of roof insulation will have a higher density so that when. And if in the future, solar panels are placed, the insulation is not crushed.
Okay, and as, and as far as runoff off the roof. Into your, your gutters, is that gonna be recirculated through the, you know, through the property into the pool? Just flow along the landscaping?
That was Mr. Lyman's topic and. Sir, could we recall Mr. Lyman to make that statement again? That was the green element of site design. With, with permission, we could just call him back for a minute. Mr. Lyman, if you could come back.
Yes, I'm back.
And the question is, what is going to happen to the, the collected water from the roof?
Yes, the, the collected roof runoff will be discharged to a underground. Stormwater management system where it would promote recharge into the aquifer.
It's not going into the open basin, it's, it's going into the ground.
So Mr. Pop, the. Each of these buildings is designed to hold one tenant, so I'm assuming it's, it's building one hundred, building two hundred, and each of them just have one tenant?
The buildings are designed to have. Multiple tenants or single tenants, Mr. Nager, if you could point out the building's capacity for tenants.
And the reason why I ask is that, that first design that you had up there, it looked like there was only one central entrance. Is there a main corridor that that goes through the building where these tenants would be, because it only looks like there's one entrance to this building?
This, this particular building has an entrance here.
Right.
There will be entrances here at the middle of the building, and because of the length of the building, you cannot see this. Office piece down at that far corner of the building.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I see that.
So here, here's a floor plan of, of the building that, of the rendering, and you can see that there's. The hatched areas here is where offices would be.
Good, thank you.
Anybody got any other questions? I've got two.
I, I do have one. Regarding being prepared for solar as a potential in the future. Which I appreciate. Would that be something to be contemplated as a, and across the board situation? As like an HOA, like condominium type of ownership in terms of leases? And maybe this is the wrong witness, and if so, I apologize. But if, you know, to do solar across the roof would be a lot more sense to do it in piecemeal sections. So what, I'm just wondering what's contemplated there.
Market conditions currently are that there are tenants that support solar and there are tenants that do not have an interest in it. So the building is designed to handle solar and it's really at the tenant's option.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Pape.
You're welcome.
Anybody got any other questions? I have a question for Mr. Nager.
Yes.
Nager, you indicated on your elevations, if you go back to your elevations. Or, or the, the rendering, the, the rectangle, the vertical rectangle, smaller rectangles that are, that are marching at that one there.
Yes.
Are those, are those windows or are those louvers?
No, those are windows at this point in time. Depending on the HVAC system, once we get into the. Into that design element, there may be louvers added to the elevations.
So that, that was, that was my question, you walked into that one, so. Is there any concern from the board or are our professionals that those windows turn into, to louvers that are a little less attractive? Or is there something that should be discussed where, where that fresh air and exhaust typically with large warehouses like this from my. Experience is, is, is there's a cross ventilation type of scenario and, and can that ventilation be. Be left to only be going through the roof structure?
So in my opinion, he's showing windows, I'm expecting windows.
Got it.
So if there's some kind of change later on. And I can assure you, and I'm putting, I guess, Mr. Pape and all of them on notice. I'm not gonna be supportive of turning those windows into louvers, just so you know, so. I, I agree, I, I, you know, Mr. Nager has been a very. Easy applicants professional to deal with, they've, he's listened to what I've said about the building. And I think design is reflective of that, in my opinion. So.
We don't have to say anything, Mr. Nager said on the record, there will be windows and that's.
Yes, I would say that they, they should remain windows, yes.
Mr. Pape, you okay with that?
Duly noted.
Thank you.
You got it.
The, the next question is, and I may need some help on how to properly phrase it. In the office pod areas, Mr. Nager, is there an anticipation that, that there could be a second floor? If the tenant requires one? It looks way from your elevation that that's possible.
Yeah. Certainly, there could be a second floor, yes.
Okay.
You've got the vertical heights to, to work with, yes.
So, so Ms. Beam, I'm gonna need some help on, on how to properly ask this question.
Okay.
In my experience, if we do not ask for the windows to be blacked out. And there is no second floor, a lot of times the mechanical systems that come from the roof. Are easily seen from the outside because those windows, the, the upper level of the windows, I'm looking at the. The elevation now, the ones above that darker gray band. You'll see all those mechanicals and it would be quite unsightly. What would be the way to, to, to make sure that the applicant would be blacking out those windows in those particular instances?
I'm sure I'm understanding what you're saying, so the mechanical equipment.
Let me, let me start over for a second.
Okay.
So take a look at. Take a look at their. Their elevate, their, their elevation here.
Yeah.
See the windows that are above the canopy?
Okay, so in that corner piece, yes.
Right, if those are not actually blacked out from the backside. And it's, it's a first floor office, you're gonna see everything that's above the ceiling, all of the mechanicals.
Okay, so Mr. Nager, when you get into that building, right, let's say you go into the corner of that building.
Yes.
Is that like a vaulted ceiling, like what is the, how does that work on the inside?
Well, at, at this point in time, I mean, it's gonna have a lot to do with whatever tenant takes that particular corner. So, I mean, it could be a two-story space, it could be a one-story space, it could be a story and a half. If the concern is that you're going to see HVAC equipment from. The exterior, the equipment, duct, ductwork and whatnot on the inside.
That's the concern, yeah.
Yeah, we, we can, we can, instead of putting vision glass there, it could be spandrel glass, which you would not be able to see through.
Fantastic.
What does that mean, though, like, it's still gonna look like windows, but you're just not gonna be able to see in, but it's gonna allow light in, how does that work?
Correct. You, it's still gonna, it's gonna look like what you see here. You're not gonna be able to see through those windows.
I think that's what you want, right?
Correct.
Okay, that sounds, that solves the problem.
Thank you. Those were my only questions, unless anybody else on the board or our professionals have any other comments?
I have a question, it's not pertaining these slides, but it's just a general question. Route thirty-three. Used to have an exit onto. Five points. Does anybody know, the professionals or even maybe chief would know, why was that road, why was that exit ramp closed? It might pertain to this, traffic wise, does anybody know?
You mean thirty-three bypass up until, up on, onto Howell Road?
Yeah.
Yeah, be- because of site distance, that was so poorly constructed that we had to shut it down because the way that was. Allowing traffic to go, there was a blind spot and, and it was, it was susceptible to a T bone accident.
It wasn't due to traffic amounts, was it?
No, no, it was site distance. That's why they closed off that exit ramp, you mean that exit ramp that was never used?
Yeah.
Yeah, site distance.
Thank you.
Horrible design.
Thank you.
That whole project was a mess, still is.
Tell us how you feel, chief. So I had to light, I had to lighten it up a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Awful project.
Anybody got anything else? Okay, with that, with that said, Mr. Pape, does that conclude your testimony with Mr. Nager?
That concludes our direct presentation of Mr. Nager for this evening. I think we've reached the point where our, our presentation to the, the board for this evening is complete. I've got pages of notes of board members' comments and comments from your professionals. And I'll, I'll restate our commitment to you that we will, will work on incorporating all of the responses into the next set of plans. To the extent that we, that board members or board professionals have further guidance to share with us. This would be a great opportunity for us to hear any further direction from you, if there is anything further.
Yeah, I, I, I only say this, that I know we said other comments, but I'd like to go back to that storage tank. I would strongly recommend that you. Figure out what that size of that tank will be now. And I'll leave it at that.
I'm negotiating with the client that we're gonna paint it like, like sky and clouds. With a little airplane pulling a banner that says Hileburn Pape and a telephone number, but we're, we're, we're working on it.
I'm just afraid that when you, when you finally figure that out, it may be the size of a silo and.
Yeah, that, that, it's. With this client and this team, we've done water towers and we've been. Successful in getting them, so they're, they're lower and squatter and, and also a color scheme that makes them so that they are. Not invisible, but they, they don't stand out, it's, it's essentially a blue and white clouds scheme that is used.
And, and just out of curiosity, it'd be nice to hear some testimony as to why the pond just can't be used as the water source. Because my understanding is the, the refrigerated warehouse off of Oak Glen Road, I can't, I think it's Cinefy. I believe that they presently use the pond, if I remember right, when that application came for an expansion a number of years ago.
We, we will present that too, including, including Chief Robert Lewis's comments about. We'll, we'll have. Colors, height, and, 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 and need all a part of the testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that. With that, Mr. Chairman, I think we, we need to find a date. To carry this application to, my first question would be for Mr. Pape. In terms of information you need to collect and things you need to review. What does you, what kind of time does you, does your team think you need to, to get all that together? And then submit whatever you want to submit at least, you know, forty-eight hours in advance, preferably early, or if it's something that the. Board's professionals need to look at.
Of course, we, we would, we would, we would abide by the, the ten day rule for any submissions. And as well as the forty-eight hour for loading. Patrick, not to put you on the spot, but I think the lion's share of the responsibilities are going to be yours, working with, with the team. What do you envision the timeframe to, to make the revisions to the plans?
To abide by the ten day rule, I think. We need, if, if the board meets twice a month. That's the next meeting is dangerously close to the ten day mark already.
Well, we, we are out of sequence this month in deference to the Jewish holidays, so our next meeting, I think is the twenty-third.
Yes, and I can help you out here, we're already booked on the twenty-third, we're booked on October seventh. October twenty-first right now has nothing, November fourth has one application and we only have one meeting in November. Due to the League of Municipalities, December is wide open, so.
I like, I, I like October, nothing on your agenda, a lot. Patrick?
Yes.
If, if. Realistic that in the next fifteen, twenty days, you can get everything in so that the.
Yes.
Take that hearing date. Sounds like that's the first one that's available to us. So. To Ms. Robano, Mr. Cuchera and Chair. We would like that second meeting in October, if it's available to us.
Eileen, what's that meeting date again?
October twenty-first.
Okay. Alright, so then the application. Of. AAFHW Properties LLC, case number SP dash one oh eight five. We carry to the boards October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one meeting, that meeting will begin at seven o'clock, it will be a virtual meeting. All documents will be on file on the township website and available for review and inspection. There will, there will be no further notice to property owners, if you receive the notice of tonight's meeting, you will not receive another one again, the meeting will be at seven o'clock. Virtual meeting on October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, the instructions on how to access that meeting will be on the township's website. As well, and again, no further notice to property owners.
Mr. Pape, would you be so kind as to grant the board an extension of time?
On the record, the applicant grants an extension of time and an abundance of caution will stay through November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. And we will follow it up with a written memorialization tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pape?
Mr. Chair and Board Members, Board Professionals and all, thank you for your time and attention this evening. Look forward to seeing you on October twenty-first with a continued presentation.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
Good night.
Very well done.
Thank you.
Master plan update?
Mr. Chairman, we are scheduling, and there'll be a notice going out, the master plan. Amendment to the conservation element is on for our next meeting. So, you know, the draft report or the draft. Amendment will be circulated shortly, prepared by Jen's office, as I said, the notice is going out. It'll be the first thing on our next, at our next meeting.
Okay, great, thank you, and do we have a need to go into executive session?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, with that being said, if nobody else has any business to discuss, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Hi.
Hi, everyone have a great weekend, enjoy your Labor Day.
Good night, everybody.